I want to make one quick special announcement, and that is that anyone here who is here to speak on item number five, which is talking about the three supervisors that will be ending their term, please fill out a card and get it to the city clerk so that we will take that in item five rather than at the end of the meeting where we do regular public comment. And you have 10 minutes to get the cards in. Okay, now I would like to call this formal meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Thank you. Good morning Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Sellers.
Here.
Thank you.
And before we begin, I want people here to know that on item number 18, we do plan to continue that item. So that if you're here to speak on that, we will not be taking public comment on item 18. It will be continued. Okay Supervisor Gates, would you please introduce your guest that will lead us in the invocation and pledge today?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It's my honor to introduce our guest who will be leading us in the prayer and pledge. This gentleman who's going to be leading us today is like me, a graduate of Deer Valley High School. He served in the Arizona House from 2013 through 2019 and in the Arizona Senate from 2019 through 2023. He's a tireless advocate for education and for first responders. And I mean this when I say this, he is a man of principle, of courage, and virtue. So I want to thank former Senator Paul Boyer for joining us and leading us in the prayer and pledge today.
Whatever one please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Father, I want to thank you so much for this morning and everyone who's here. I want to thank the County Board of Supervisors for their many years of service. I want to thank you for them for putting the interests of their constituents above their own and in many cases, their fidelity to the truth, Father. And this Advent season, I want to remember what you did for us, Father, with the incarnation, that you emptied yourself. And we remember your death on the cross for our sins, Father. We thank you and we love you for everything that you've done for us, Father. I pray that you just bless this meeting and we pray all these things, Jesus, in your name. Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you Senator for being here this morning. We certainly appreciated working with you when you were at the State Senate. Okay, next is item number four, pet showcase. Kim, please introduce us to the star of today's pet showcase, Twinkle.
So I am not Kim, I am May, and this is not Twinkle. This is actually Chad. Twinkle, great for her. She was adopted yesterday, which is great for us, but a little awkward, you know, awkward for us as well. But for those in front of the podium who cannot see what Chad looks like, he is a Maricopa mutt for sure, a black chunky monkey with a curly tail. And he is six years old and he is just as sweet as can be. He is truly the most calm, mild-mannered, quote-unquote, easy dog that one could adopt. If you are in the market for a dog, but you're over all that puppy stuff, Chad is your guy. It's very evident that at some point he was loved by somebody because he, first of all, is neutered. And he already knows to sit and shake. If you offer a treat, he will do it without you telling him to. So clearly, he was trained by someone and he was someone's dog, but he's already been at the shelter for two weeks. So he is adoptable now and he is just looking for someone to start this next chapter of his life. And on the bright side, his adoption fees are sponsored by the Bissell Pet Foundation through December 17th. So it will be $0 to adopt him, but that also includes vaccines, microchip, and he's already neutered, so. But if you would like to adopt him, he's at the West Shelter.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that we get a good look at him?
I would carry him, but he's a little chunky for that. Let me just step further away so you can see.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you can see it.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Chairman Supervisors, I do have a couple of announcements. First one is on page 39, item number 47. That is the Maricopa County Attorney's Office Digital Evidence Management Solution Project Agenda Item Number 47. That item is being withdrawn. And on page 58, this is just a minor correction to a typo. Item number 58, under Procurement Services, I'm sorry, on page 58, item number 103. The title should be Summer Youth Workforce Program, not Summer Your Workforce Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number five, recognition of outgoing chairman and supervisors. Vice Chair Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, in recognition of the year of the leadership of the past year of our chairman and the leadership of three county supervisors who are leaving us this month, I'd ask that we all go down to the well for some interesting times. Thank you.
Are you coming this way? Come this way. First of all, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Over this past year, Jack Sellers has led this Board of Supervisors with distinction, integrity, and honesty. And an appreciation for his leadership, not only for the past year, but for all the previous times that Jack Sellers has served as chairman on behalf of Supervisor Gallardo, County Manager Jen Pocorsky, Supervisors Gates and Hickman. I want to give this to you, Mr. Chairman, as a token of our appreciation and thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This is also a very unique day because this is the last day that Chairman Sellers, Supervisors Gates and Hickman will be serving as county supervisors here at the Board of Supervisors. And as you know, they've led distinguished careers in public service. And what we have here today, and County Manager, if you can help me out, are our tokens of appreciation for their career and their service to Maricopa County. So we have here is a plaque, and I'm going to read it out loud, presented to Jack Sellers. So we have here is a plaque, and I'm going to read it out loud, presented to Jack Sellers, Supervisor District One, in appreciation of your years of dedicated service to Maricopa County, 2019 through 2024. And we also have this beautiful flag and a shadow box for each of you. Now you have to hold all this stuff throughout. Next is for Supervisor Bill Gates. Supervisor District Three, in appreciation of your years of dedicated service to Maricopa County for the years 2017 and 2024. And for Supervisor Clint Hickman, Supervisor District Four, in his years of service to Maricopa County, 2013 to 2024.[653.62][653.62](applause) We're going to say a few words when we return to the dais, especially Supervisor Gallardo and myself, but we really appreciate all of you being here for these three amazing, wonderful men, who every single day have served this county with everything that they had, 100%, and it did it in service to their community, to their neighbors, for their families, and for you. Thank you all.[685.43][685.43](applause)
Give it to a picture. Yeah.
All right, let's take a picture. Hold it up.
Yeah, individual photos next. Individual photos of each of you with your phone.
Jack, you go first.
Thank you. And then, Roswell, I'd like to go.
Jeff, please.
Isn't it?
Make sure you get to end.
Is there devil horns above me?
County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a few brief remarks I'd like to share with you. Just wanted to say, on behalf of the residents, on behalf of the staff, and on behalf of myself, just want to thank you for your principled leadership, your vision, and your tireless service to the public. Your accomplishments are too numerous to list, but to name a few, you've had the foresight to invest in state-of-the-art buildings for the county, state-of-the-art technology, so we can serve our community and support the growing county. You have restructured the Elections Department. You have used one-time federal funds in a way that very few jurisdictions have across this country, by investing in thousands of units of affordable housing. You've led the county through a pandemic, and always ensured that staff are supported and have the resources to serve the community. So we really thank you for that. Each of you have navigated such complex issues facing the county, and you've always done it with integrity, courage, respect, and an eye to the future. With your shared focus on fiscal responsibility, customer service, continuous innovation, the county is well-positioned for whatever the future holds. And in front of you, there is a jump drive, and we did a kudos board from the county departments, who sent messages of thanks to you. And just, I read through them, and a few words and phrases kept popping up: visionary, inspiring leadership, honorable, unwavering support, and you will be missed. So thank you for your confidence in hiring me as County Manager, and it's been an honor to serve under this board.[933.23][933.23](applause)
Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is definitely a sad occasion, being our final official board meeting together. All three of you have just been just great, not only colleagues, but dear friends. You have been just awesome to work with. I have served in public life for a long time, but I've never served with three gentlemen that have showed so much courage and passion for our constituents, the people of Maricopa County. You have stood up against those that continue to want to try to undermine our elections. You pushed back a little on the times during COVID. You just have shown just tremendous courage. Go down the road here. Bill, I can tell you, and I'll never forget this, I don't know if you remember this, you and I were having a phone conversation. And there's always stuff that is sad, that you always remember. You and I had a phone conversation, and I wish I remember the year. It was right in the midst, I want to say 2020, it was right in the midst of COVID, and we were faced with tremendous challenges and some important decisions, and you said this over the phone to me. You said, "Steve, there are certain issues that are more important than reelection, and public health is one of them." And I'll never forget that. Seriously.[1043.23][1043.23](applause) We were there, along with the other boards, and at the end of the day, in the middle of COVID, and we took some heat over some of the decisions we made, but at the end of the day, we did the right thing. It was about saving lives, and you were right on the forefront of that. There were times where I didn't know, like, what direction, what should we do, and I would turn to you, and you would always have this foresight of, "This is what we need to do, Steve, this is what we have to do." And I just want to thank you, but I'll never forget that comment you made. It really just shows truly what a gentleman and the type of man you are. So thank you, Bill. It's been an honor. Jack was one of our appointed supervisors, and I don't think I'm going to surprise anyone. I don't know too many Republicans out there in elected office that I've worked with, and you know, besides the legislature. So we had, during the process, there were several applicants that put their name in, many I wasn't too familiar with. I knew my name, I knew Jack my name, because his tenure on the council out in the East Valley, but I really didn't know them personally, you know, so you have to do all your homework. And Jack was right there on my list of someone that we needed on the board. He come from a municipality, he understood the East Valley, understood transportation like no one else. But this, you know, we make some critical votes here, especially when adding new members to the board. At least for me, I want someone that perfect fit, someone who's going to be able to work together and really accomplish some big things, and you're it, Jack. You have just been a tremendous leader on this board, when it comes to not only transportation, when it comes to economic development and creating jobs. You've just been on the forefront, Jack. You've been a great friend, and I'm going to miss you. I know you're going to stay active. One thing about Jack, Jack is like the Energizer Bunny. He is out there, he is involved, and I know he'll continue to be involved in our community, involved in the county, and really just pushing some critical issues that we're having to deal with, not only from a county, but from a state perspective as well. So, Jack, thank you so much for your service here at Maricopa County, and I know we'll cross paths again soon. So thank you, Jack, for your service, and also as chairman as well. You've done just a remarkable job as chairman. And Clint, my partner in crime from the West Valley. We, so Clint was probably, when I first got elected, one of the first supervisors I met with, because he was a West Valley kid. I knew the name, I didn't know Bill, I didn't know Clint that well, you know, but I knew the name. So, you know, the name, I knew the family, I knew. But Clint has just been a great partner here on the board, representing the West Valley. We share similar communities, we stuck together, you know, East Valley versus West Valley in some cases, but we stuck together. You've just been a great friend, Clint. You're always there. I can call him anytime. I call him late at night, I call him in the morning, but he's always available, you know, to be there, to ask, you know, what his thoughts are on certain things, and just continue to work together. I can tell you, even in the West Valley, everyone speaks very highly of you, Clint, they do. All the councils, the mayors, the city staffs, and multiple municipalities just think the world of you as well as I do. You've just been a great friend, and I definitely look forward to continuing to work with you. You're not going anywhere, you're a West Valley kid as well, born and raised out there, and look forward to continuing to work with you, Clint. You know, may not be directly on this board, but out in the community tackling issues pertaining to the West Valley, I know you and I will continue to be together. So thank you, Clint, for everything you do.
Thank you, Steve. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, it's a bittersweet day for me. Three years ago, at this hearing, at the December hearing, I was appointed to join this board, and I was selected by the gentleman sitting on either side of me. So when someone selects you to work alongside with them, it's a tremendous honor, and it's just been a tremendous honor to work with all three of them the past three exact years. Jack, you and I represent the East Valley together, and one word I can describe to you is gentleman. He is just an unfailing gentleman who treats everyone with respect and just wants the best for everyone. And I remember my first week here in office, it was still a surreal experience, Jack invited me to an event in his district, and introduced me to everyone that day, and said, "This is my colleague, Tom Galvin." And it's been an honor to be a colleague with Jack and these two gentlemen. And when I think about him, I think about him like this: an egg farmer, a lawyer, an automotive executive. These are citizen servants. These are men who came from the business community, who came from our neighborhoods. They're not what I would call, quote-unquote, "politicians." These are your neighbors, who will come here every single day to work just as hard for you, and to make sure that the community that they're raising, their family, is better off. And I think about Clint Hickman, who I really didn't know at all, and you have just been absolutely wonderful and tremendous to me. It's not just working with you, Clint, that has meant the world to me, but all the times that you called me randomly, out of the blue, to see how I was doing. I had to run in a campaign only six months after I got this appointment, and I had to run another campaign. And campaigning's not easy, especially in these times, especially when you're a person campaigning, when you tell people what they need to hear, not what they want to hear. And there were so many times where Clint Hickman just called me out of the blue to check up on me, to see how I was doing, and it reminded me that, you know, we're colleagues, but we're in this together. And Clint, in many ways, you're like the older brother I never had, and for no matter what happens, I'll always appreciate that and always have that personal connection with you, but I also saw how much you care and your passion for your family, the pride that you have in carrying the Hickman name, the pride you talk about with your wife and your children, and the community come from in the West Valley. And to see what all these three men were subjected to, and I'm going to talk about it, has just been a disgrace, just been an absolute disgrace. These three men sitting next to me have subjected to death threats, to abuse, to epithets, only because they did the right thing and they stood up for it, on a wide variety of topics, especially in a public health matter and elections, but on a wide variety of topics. And I don't want anyone sitting up here in this dais to go through what they had to go through, but they did it with courage, and they did it with resoluteness. And you know what they did? They turned the other cheek. I never saw them become bitter, I never saw them become angry, and I never saw them try to lash out in the ways that these people were lashing out at them. And the people like Jack and Clint and Bill, they exemplified that. And Bill, to me, you just taught me so much here. I know how much disappointment meant, and how you know that it had to be done right, and for you to place your trust in me meant the world to me. And you became chairman right after I was appointed, and I was just so impressed by your leadership and your grace, and how you're really forging the path to do the right thing and to find the right way. And many times, these boards of supervisors, we have to sit in executive session with our attorneys and go through really tough, very complicated legal matters involving either prosecutions, the sheriff's office, jails, and of course, elections and lawsuits. And every single time, I just waited for what Bill had to say, because to me, I was always impressed, he always had the right thing to say. And Bill, every single time you said something, I learned something from you. And you were so good at communicating when you were chairman, I got phone calls from you over and over again. I always hang up with my wife, and I'd be like, "I'm so glad I'm working with Bill Gates, because I get to learn from someone." And I'm an attorney, and I think when attorneys work together, they really appreciate the collaboration and the mentorship that they get from another attorney, because attorneys are always helping each other figure out things or see things that they didn't see themselves. And Bill, I think you did that, and you cared about the county just as much as Jack and Clint do. All the times we had to go through major appointments, including appointing our county manager, these are real big decision points for the county that really forged the path in the future of Maricopa County, and you're going to leave this place a lot better off than the day you entered. And I feel that way about all three of them. And on January 1, when I come back here, these three gentlemen won't be here, but I'm going to be thinking about them every single day I walk through this door, and I want to maintain and carry their legacy, because a lot of people serve in public office, and unfortunately, their integrity or their dignity is diminished when they leave public service, but these guys have it intact. And a lot of people do serve in public office, and they're able to maintain their dignity and integrity and leave it intact, but very few men like these are going to see it enhanced. And that's how I see it, that the names Gates, Hickman, and Sellers are going to echo through the years in Maricopa County and the history of Arizona.
Supervisor Hickman, would you like to say anything?
It's so unfair, Jack, to look at me first, and I know this meeting, everybody is probably going to go a little bit longer than what you expected. Lord knows how much I want to say about my colleagues and Juanita and Jen, but I like say those things in private. So what I wanted to do, though, is not forget about a certain central point of the history of this place, where we thank our chairman, because this is going to get lost. Our terms are ending, but there's also a term ending that is central to this county and its leadership of the chairman. So, and I thought it's probably best to write this, because I'm not going to look at you. Chairman Sellers, thank you for your service. Your energy and passion for the region are apparent on your social media and in your comments here on the dais. You are a tireless champion, not just for the East Valley, but for the entire county. Your expertise in transportation and infrastructure was instrumental in a successful Prop IV-79. So congratulations, I know how hard you worked on that, Jack, and put yourself out there, your chin out there, ready to get knocked off, but maybe it's because of your understanding in the automotive industry, maybe it's because of your understanding in logistics and all things, roads, that you were a central figure that everybody could look to, not just this board, not just this county, not just McDott, but also the legislature and the governor. So I appreciate that. Unlike some Republicans, you and I both believe a robust transportation plan is essential to the success and economic vitality of our region, and I'm going to touch on that. And I'm going to touch on that. I'm going to touch on that because I am a homegrown local kid. I am a Republican, but I'm an Arizonan also. I'm a family man and I'm a business owner. And sometimes people that are come from out of state see this wonderful place and think that it got built all by itself or they had a hand in it from Chicago or Ohio growing up or something. No, what happens is it's the taxpayers. The taxpayers that are here build those things, the users of these roads, the businesses that are hauling freight. And it's not, it's not just them thinking about which way they want to frame a policy based on who's coming into their office and talking to them about or not. So, I thank all those visionary people that were here in the 30s, 40s, 50s and getting us to this point. And Jack, you have been involved in this so long. I won't say you were from the 30s, but you certainly, certainly feel like you were there shaping this growth and looking at it with that, towards that eye, to welcome people from across the country and understanding why it's so important that a native like me will never leave this place because we've got, and they've been able to shape the build of this place. So, thank you and thank you to the taxpayer. I think you would agree, Jack. We are more disappointed by the silence of our friends than the rage by our detractors. Jack, thank you for all you've done this year, all you've put up with this year as a chairman. You've been a, you've been just absolutely the distinguished gentleman that I had a hand in appointing. Your measured approach has helped this county this year. And your other years, there is a, there's a reason why I made you my vice chair two times. And I knew you were going to, you were going to be that same guy coming in as chairman as you were vice chairman and as just a lowly supervisor of the East Valley. So, so thank you, Jack, for that. And last, just real quickly, there's so many people. Thank you guys all for being here. I know that you're here, citizens government. You might want to talk about a topic that's on the agenda. Sorry for making you sit through this, but honestly, to all the county workers, thank you. I'm, I have been so privileged and honored to lead you, but not really, just be a co-supporter. There's going to be three new people on this board that have opinions shaped by the media or people that are not involved in this government and want to ask questions. So did I when I, when I came onto this board. I heard things, I thought things, I read about things. But boy, you get, you get involved with a government like this, an efficient government, a proud government, a hardworking government and public servants. You'll, they'll understand very quickly, this government is the place to be to provide public service to our county and our region and our state. So, thank you guys for always working hard. It was so easy, always, in every topic, to be able to be right alongside of you. I know so many of you. And you know what? I see you here on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. It's not just a Zoom call. It's you guys putting it into action, putting it into gear. This, if you didn't know this about this government, this is a very small government. It is actually, in my time, I think that we have had one less worker per thousand people. But we're providing more customer service and better services to the county taxpayer than we ever have. So, the new people are going to be able to look back like I did and be able to steer a government that has basically no debt, making no interest payments, not asking the county taxpayer for more money than what they need to provide great service. So, thank all of you guys, everybody who's watching, for doing such a great job for the 10 years, 11 years that I've been here. And the last thing I'm going to say is, if you want to know my story, it can go back to ancient Rome. Read about Cincinnatus, a guy that fought his battles and left government to go back to his farm. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echo a lot of the comments of my colleague Supervisor Hickman. Jen, I want to thank you for your incredible leadership of this organization. You've followed in a long line of great county managers and frankly, you've taken it to the next level. And in particular, I want people to know, not only do you do a great job of helping us to manage the finances and run this organization efficiently, but you are someone who is always about how we get to yes. And for those who say that government isn't about that and government is about, you know, moving slowly and not getting things done, I suggest that you meet Jen Pekorsky because it is really remarkable and I thank you for that. And your entire team, you have built a team that is second to none in this country, all the way down throughout, all of the employees who work in Maricopa County. I couldn't be prouder. And I got to tell you, there's a phrase that really gets under my skin and that is "good enough for government work." That's not how we operate here in Maricopa County. And I might have even been a person who said something like that years ago and I apologize for that. Because government service is something to be proud of. It is incredibly important work and every single person who works here for Maricopa County, I couldn't be prouder of. I want to thank my family for all their support over the years. And also, I know that I wouldn't be here, sitting on this dais if we're not for the time that I spent in the city of Phoenix. And I want to thank all the people over there too, just right across the street. And the partnership that we've seen between the city of Phoenix and Maricopa County in the last eight years, I think we'd never seen before. And I'm very proud of that and I trust that that will certainly continue into the future. We do depend on the team here and in particular, our chiefs of staff. And I do want to thank the two that are here in the room, my former chief, Zach Shearer, and my current chief, TJ Mitchell, as well as my deputy chiefs. I have Carissa Cortez is here and I think Carly is here as well. I want to thank all of you guys. I know that we wouldn't have been able to achieve what we did if we hadn't worked together. I want to thank Steve and Tom for your comments. They mean so much to me. I'm so honored to have served with both of you and of course, you too. Clint, you know, I know 30 years from now, if I'm somewhere and I need you, I know you'll be there. And you know, that's something you just don't have when you serve in public office. It didn't happen. And I know that all that we've been through, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give it away for the world because of the experience I've had with these four men. Simply remarkable. And I've said that a lot of times. I feel like I'm the luckiest guy in the world. Mr. Chairman, I would echo everything that Supervisor Hickman said and more. I remember, the first time I met you, our mutual friend Barry Wong brought you out to a farm breakfast I was having up in District 3. And I was like, "Who's this guy? I'd heard, I'd heard of your name before." And I was so impressed that you came out. And as time went on, we had the honor of appointing you as a supervisor. And there's a phrase that I have for you and I believe it's absolutely true for anyone who's followed this board, you should know it. This man is the conscience of this board. The decisions that we made, standing up against our own party, standing up against things that, you know, people who had bad intentions, it was because of this man. He always does the right thing, always. It's simply remarkable to see that from an elected official. He's a good man and I couldn't be prouder to have served as you and to have you as our chairman and all that you went through this year. So, you know, this is my last chance up here on the dais and I've thought a lot about our democratic republic. I've talked about it. I've been interviewed about it. And let me be very clear to everyone in this room. I see Scott Jarrett back there, our elections director. Do not ever take this democratic republic for granted. We have done a lot as a country in the past few years to put it all at risk, but it's, fortunately, it's not too late. But this is the time that we have got to get back to who we are, remember who we are, remember what the founders intended and come together as a country once again and respect the people who make this democratic republic work. Thank you to everyone in this room who has supported me over the last eight years and before that. It has been my true honor and privilege to sit in this seat. And again, I know this is not my seat. This is the people's seat and I look forward to the leadership of the next board and all that they are going to do for the people of Maricopa County. Thank you.
You know, I thought about, for those of you that are familiar with Stephen Hawking's A Brief History of Time, I thought that us talking about our service here on this board would be brief and unfortunately for all of you, it's not. But, serving on this board has absolutely been the greatest honor of my life. I just feel so fortunate to have had this opportunity. Such a treat to work with such an exceptional staff. Every issue that came up, we had the right person that could help us maneuver that and handle it appropriately. I'm not sure I've been involved in any organization that has been as effective and as efficient as this group. When I came on this board, one of the things that I realized after serving on the Chandra City Council is that this is a lot more complicated than a city council position because there are other electeds in Maricopa County that have their own, that are responsible for their own departments. The board has overall budgeting responsibility, but until you learn how to work with all those other electeds to create one Maricopa County and have, because that's all the public knows. They don't know. They don't think about the fact that there's, you know, a separate county attorney, a separate assessor, a separate recorder, a separate sheriff, that are all individually elected and responsible for their own departments. So, one of the major goals of this board since I've been on it is for us to serve as one Maricopa County and I think we have done that very effectively. You know, during some pretty significant challenges, I'm really proud of what this board has accomplished. Just in the past year, Maricopa County won 75 awards from the National Association of Counties and was named the best county in the United States for economic development. All that while being the second most efficient large county in the world. Well, in the United States. The world. The most fulfilling thing for me has been the opportunity to serve with our current board that has always put integrity above politics. When you serve in a partisan political position, it takes strength to always do the right thing rather than what is politically expedient. And this board has been there. Thank you all for allowing me the honor of serving you. And some of you may be disappointed to find out that I am not going away. With that, I guess I would ask for any public speakers to come forward.
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms for this item. Lou Crowley wishes to speak and Mr. Martin Schultz.
My name is Martin Schultz. I've been involved in public policy, public affairs and legislation for decades, maybe five. Was chief of staff to three Phoenix mayors. I worked for Pinnacle West and APS for 32 years. Ran a law firm. Now I'm retired, but still active. And I do follow what's going on. So, for those of you who are here and these respected supervisors, I have good news and I have good news. So, the good news is, I came here on an item that I understand is going to be continued because I wanted to talk about affordable housing, homelessness and give you about two or three hours' worth of the history and my views on the subject. The good news, I'm not going to do that. The other good news is, being here, this is really an opportunity because I want to identify with all the comments that were made by all the supervisors and others about the talent, the respect that you all have and frankly, the hard work and dedication in light of a lot of, excuse the language, crap that has been thrown at elected officials and appointed officials over the last several years. I've experienced a lot of things, but this most recent set of dialogues is really tough and it's really tough on the elected officials and the appointed officials and the five of you specifically. And so, on behalf of, you know, myself and my family and friends who are here and others, I want to say what a lot of people are thinking and that is, thank you and we really do appreciate what you do as elected officials and public servants and go from your day job or your family or your history back then to make a decision to do what you are doing. It really is not only a credit to you, but it also is a real contribution to the fastest growing county in America and a great location, Maricopa County, Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty, and thank you for your service.
It is humbling to be in front of you, the men of integrity that you are. I've known Clint, Bill, you know, Sonny Sloper's from a long time and Jack. It's been fun on this transportation roadway. And when Mr. Galvin said, "You're not politician," I took offense with that. My father was a senator. There is nothing wrong with being a politician. It's an honorable profession and you are honorable men in it. But if you want to skate from it, we'll just call you public servants. Is that better? Because in Maricopa County, we don't have bureaucrats. We have public servants that work it because of the leadership in which you have done to do that. I'm hoping that with this next administration, the hatefulness of Mr. Patel and you guys being the enemy, I'm hoping that my president, when he starts doing those pardons, makes sure that you guys are included in it because these people have hate in their hearts. And it's a very vile and negative thing. I've sat through it and as I call them, the maggots. Because what they are is trying to eat the flesh off our democracy and you guys were targets in it. So, I appreciate Clint, what all you have done of a man of integrity. And when it came time to not answer a phone, good man. Jack, the same. And Bill, the threats and that were totally uncalled for. And the TV stations that went after you too, please, America, truth is better than fiction. Peace.
Well, thank you. And I'll just make a couple more remarks. I think you probably can tell that there are different areas of expertise on this board, certainly diverse opinions, but we have really worked well together. I have great admiration for every one of my colleagues on this board. I consider you friends. In fact, I consider you family at this point. What a pleasure it's been to work with all of you and I hope we can all stay connected. Okay. And I got through that without crying too much. And I got through that without crying too much.[598.66][598.66][laughter] Okay, planning and zoning hearing, consent agenda items six and seven, Grand Verde Energy Solar Projects, item eight, Belmont Industrial, item nine, TK Concrete LLC, item 10, 6439 West Fremont Road, item 11, Gray Storage, item 12, McQueen Rail Commercial, item 13, 310 Dust Control. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items six through 13?
Chairman, I do have a few speaker forms on items six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
We have, I have two in favor for item number six and two in opposition for item six. If you like, I can call on...
Please.
First person to speak in favor, item number six, Cesar Corral.
Good morning, Chairman Sellers, members of the Board of Supervisors. First and foremost, before I begin my testimony, I want to thank those of you that are departing for your service here in Arizona over the last couple of years and for your service here with the Maricopa Board of Supervisors. I want to start off with introducing myself. My name is Cesar Corral. I'm representing the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm here to express strong support for Agenda Item Six, the Grand Verde Energy Solar Project. The project is vital for our carpenters who take immense pride in their craft and their role in building the clean energy future. Many of our members live and raise their families here in Maricopa County, and they want to work closer to home instead of commuting long hours to other counties. As mentioned, currently, some of our members are forced to take jobs far outside the county, commuting long hours to Pinell County or other areas, which add stress and takes precious time away from their families. Projects like these will allow our carpenters to work locally, contributing directly to economic vitality of Maricopa County and strengthening our community. Grand Verde means good-paying, local jobs that strengthen our community and provide stability our members and their families need. We are grateful to Apex Clean Energy for their collaboration and readiness to invest in local workers like us. Our carpenters are ready to build this project with pride and purpose, and we respectfully ask for your support of Agenda Item Six. Thank you for your time.
So, we have two in opposition to item six, is that correct?
Two in favor and two in opposition, Chairman.
So, we will take item six separately from the consent agenda?
And I also have a speaker that wishes to speak on item number seven, but this person did not mark if they are in favor or in opposition. And I do have a speaker for item number eight as well, and they did not mark if they wish to speak in favor or in opposition.
Okay.
So, six, seven, and eight.
Let's have each one of the speakers come up, and if you would, call up a speaker and then who's on deck for the next speak, and then we will decide which ones to take out of the consent and vote on separately.
Okay, next speaker in favor, this is still on item number six, Mark Cardenas.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. For the record, Mark Cardenas, representing the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 640, address 2320 West Mitchell Drive, Phoenix, Arizona. Here to testify in favor of Agenda Item Number Six, known as the Grand Verde Energy Solar Project. I'm here representing 4,000 electrical workers throughout Maricopa County and our signatory contractors that currently number in the hundreds. Every day, our folks go to work building some of the solar panels in Western Maricopa County and are immensely proud to be from this community, of this community, and raising our families in this community. I wanted to thank the owners of Apex Clean Energy for their partnership, openness, and willingness to meet with local stakeholders, including us, whenever they are asked. Our skilled construction workers are painfully aware that every day they step onto a job site, they're essentially working themselves out of a job. We want this project to happen. Some of our folks drive all the way to Pinell County every day to go to work, which adds additional hours to their commute and takes them away from their families. Our workers want to be able to work a full-time shift and still have time to pick up our kids after home and help them make dinner. Approving Grand Verde will enable us to continue to live and work in our local community. We're proud of our trades and also proud to be members of this community. We are in absolute support of this project and look forward to the day when we can put shovels in the ground. And Honorable Supervisors, we ask for your support of Agenda Item Number Six.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next two are in opposition. This is for item number six. First up is Rick, Rick looks like Rick Sutter.
And who is after Rick?
Good morning.
I'm sorry, excuse me. After Rick, we have Jacob Gaston.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel, my name is Rick Sutter. I farm in Buckeye, Arizona, Imperial Valley, California. I have a 400-acre farm that is located on the western end of this solar project. We share property boundaries. The Buckeye Hills, which the residents of Buckeye consider that all Buckeye Hills, is a very pristine mountain recreational area. And as a farmer, I would say, put the solar projects all in one spot. There's 5,000, 10,000 acres of solar panels already around the nuclear, Pedal Verde Nuclear Plant, and why take a recreational area that the public and the residents of Buckeye will no doubt be using as this thriving city grows? In additions to that, I have concerns with the watershed off the mountains, the Buckeye Hills. There was dikes and levees and dams established in that region, in that area, to flow the water around, direct it to certain exits to the Gila River. And in addition, there is the Paloma Canal, which has a siphon that it, the water from the canal goes underground, and the water from the mountains go ground level across the dam or the canal and across Old US 80. Now, this has all been designed, engineered back in early 1900s, 1902, I think, is when...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good day.
Chairman, next up, Mr. Jacob Gaston, and he marked items six and seven in opposition, followed by Lori Barone for item number seven as well.
Hi, good morning. I want to add my thank you to you guys for your service. My name is Jacob Gaston. Can you hear me here?
Yes.
My name is Jacob Gaston. I've been, I've been up front with my opposition for this since I found out about it, since the beginning, just for a lot of the critical concerns that I thought might affect my property. I did want to say, though, that while I opposed the project, it had nothing to do with the applicant. They've been very communicative and willing to work with me, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. There's a lot of, there was a lot of concerns I had with this project, but I'm here to focus on just one. One concern is, I'm asking for a condition be added to the zoning of simple 100-foot setback from the property that I border with this proposed project. That would be on the northern, so I own two 40-acre parcels on top of each other. So, 100-foot setback on the northern, my northern property parcel, and all along the eastern parcel of my property. I think that's a reasonable request. I understand that they're in preliminary development and site plan and all that stuff. Obviously, we all understand that, and they don't know, they might have reservoir basins on the property and this and that. They don't know. That's why I'm here, is just to respectfully request a setback, so then that's included in the zoning, so they have to abide by that and work around that. While I have, if this condition is added, this one simple condition, I will withdraw my opposition, although I have other concerns, like this would satisfy my major concern. And I think that demonstrates my willingness to work towards a solution and be a good neighbor. I want to be a good neighbor. I want things to go forward, but that is a, probably my biggest concern is the setback. Obviously, I don't want panels up against my property. That would is where my building sites would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next up, Lori Barone. She did not mark in favor or in opposition. Lori, is this on item number seven as well?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to just say, I'm embarrassed for you, Mr. Gates, that you don't know that we live in a constitutional republic, not a democratic republic, so that, there's that. Also, y'all are patting yourselves on the back. By the way, congratulations, all of you. I wish y'all luck, and I'm praying for y'all because I think you need it, moving along. But I'd also like to make sure that you're aware that while you're patting yourselves on the back for these...
Is this on item number seven, ma'am?
Yes, sir, it will be. While you're patting yourselves on the back, you must remember that we are laughing stock regarding the elections that you people have run.
You're out of order. She's out of order.
Also, there is no address listed under number seven. Exactly where is that property and who owns it? Because the land department, the Arizona State Land Department does, meaning that that the property on that agenda is seven, is that meaning that it belongs to we, the people, that property, because it's the Arizona State Land Department? Who owns the property?
County manager.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Tom Ellsworth and Darren Gerard to come up. They can provide details on the planning case.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tom Ellsworth, Director of Plan and Development, and I have with me Darren Gerard, our Planning Manager. The specific question is about the ownership of the property. I believe there is a land lease worked out with the Arizona State Land Department. As this proceeds forward, the two, the two items before you, one is a, is a major comprehensive plan amendment to go to utilities to allow for the rezoning, which is the, which is the accompanying zoning case, item seven. That item seven would be to go to industrial zoning to allow for future development of the, of a large solar field. The specific property is located on either side of Highway 85 at the intersection of Riggs Road. It's approximately 3,300 acres, so it's a vast amount of property out there. As far as the specific ownership and the land deals, the applicant may be able to answer that better, but it is, it is Arizona state land, as well as it won't get a specific address until we come into the permitting process itself, at which time it will also be reviewed for, for any drainage concerns or any environmental concerns. It will need to be, meet federal, state, and county environmental regulations, as well as any of our drainage regulations, to ensure that all stormwater runoff meets all current plans.
Okay, Tom, and would that also be where the question about possible setbacks would be addressed?
So, the setbacks, so as part of the IUPD over there, they are asking for modifications to set setbacks for this. The solar panels, at the request, would be at zero feet. A typical industrial setback is 10 to 25 feet, depending on the adjacent zoning and land uses. But there is also stipulation in there that sets the battery energy storage systems to be set back at 100 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I never heard the answer, who owns the property?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here. I'd like to hear from them, if that's possible. Yeah, and, don't worry about that, don't worry about that question. Come to the podium. We have, we have, the gentleman that spoke before and on his suggestion, that's what I'm more interested in.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman Sellers, Supervisors. My name's Andrew Yancy. I'm an attorney at Bergen-Freig Smalling Overholster. We're at 4343 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. We're here representing Apex Clean Energy. They are the proposed developer for this project. This is, the whole project is about 4,000 acres entirely state trust land. About 600 acres of that is in the city of Buckeye, so that's not up today. We're going through a separate process in Buckeye. But for the county jurisdiction property, we do have a major comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request in front of you today. Certainly appreciate all of staff's work on this project, recommendation approval from staff and from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know we've heard from several people today. We do also have two letters of support from adjacent landowners that have been submitted since Planning and Zoning Commission. Very quickly on a couple of things, we think this is an ideal location for this project. I think, as you all know, there's a lot of energy demand in our state right now. This is on both sides of State Route 85. There are legal descriptions of that property in with our application, and that will be attached to the approvals here today. In the surrounding area, there is some BLM land, there's the Lewis Prison, there's two different landfills, there's another solar project already built to our east, another proposed hydrogen hub and solar project to our south. We would interconnect with the Hohoba Substation, which is immediately adjacent to our property, so there's not a long interconnection line, and there is a lot of high-voltage transmission infrastructure going through that area already today, which is what makes it so attractive for solar. We have touched base with many of the property owners around us. As I mentioned, we do have support letters from two of them. We have spoken with both Mr. Sutter and Mr. Gaston, who were here before, extensively with Mr. Gaston. We're willing to keep working, working with him through the site plan process. We do not have a plan of development that's attached to this zoning case. We would like to get further through the process with the utilities for offtake and interconnection before we come with that plan of development that will cite specific things within the project. There are certainly some portions of the project where we're looking for that, that zero setback. The way we do it in the IUPD is we just make that apply across the entire thing. You know, that said, we're perfectly willing to continue talking to these owners and work with them on what would be the appropriate design. You know, at this time, the property around us is vacant. If they have their own development plans, we're happy to look at them and maybe figure out a way to coordinate how best to interact. So, we'd like to just keep going through the process and working with our neighbors. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that all the speakers on item six and seven?
For six and seven, yes, Chairman.
Okay, so perhaps we should go ahead and entertain a motion on six and seven?
Mr. Chairman, I would be willing to offer a motion to approve items six and seven and highly encourage you to continue to work with the neighboring property owners. Been, been great working with the applicant, and I know the Buckeye has been really engaged in this as well, so, yes, I'll make a motion to approve items six and seven.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion passes. Okay, you have a speaker on item eight?
Yes, Lou Crowley wishes to speak on item number eight. And Chairman, just so you, for the record, the applicant is available to speak if necessary, also for number eight.
And I appreciate that the applicant did some little outreach for myself. I looked at this item on the agenda and realized that this development runs from I-10 to the 60 up around Wickenburg. You know, it's going to be, what, 6 million people was the plat that they were putting out. I liked that part of the plat said they weren't responsible for the rail or mass transit. And I'm looking at it going, well, I can see where they're going to be changing it from citizenry to industrial, but we're talking about an area the size of Phoenix that's going to have the same amount of people in there. So, I believe that little agenda item needs a little more scrutiny in that. But as the applicant did reach out to me and say, you know, "We'll keep you abreast on how these things are going," and I know it's 40 years that this is projected to get dealt with and done, but I look at the aquifer of the Haciapa Valley. That's right where they're at, right? What's, what is that, and how is it being interrelated to our whole state's water plan? So, I think that the board and that, we need to look at it a little closer and keep their feet to the fire to make sure that it's a development that... to the fire to make sure that it's a development that adheres to better air quality, jobs, and transportation. And like I said, where's the railroad going to be going from the BS&amp;F at Wickenburg down to the I-10 near Tonopah? Because if you're going to be having heavy industrial, wouldn't you want to have a railroad moving it? Just a thought.
Thank you, Blue. Madam Clerk, is that all the speakers on item eight?
Chairman, no other speakers.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on item eight.
Chairman, move approval on item number eight.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, I would now entertain a motion on items nine through 13.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on items nine through 13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, Tom and Darren are already here, so regular agenda, item 14, Gold Hawk at the Preserve.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is Case CPA 2024-004, Gold Hawk at the Preserve in District 2. This is a major comprehensive plan amendment for future land use designation to change the goldfield area plan from the development master plan, from single family to single family rural zero to one. This is in anticipation of an associated rezoning request. As a major comprehensive plan amendment, it was, this is the state set aside by, the date set aside by state statute for consideration of the major amendments. We've received a request, and has been passed out in the handout and in the packet, from the applicant requesting a continuance of this item to the March 12 meeting, I believe.
Okay, the board will now consider item 14?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 14 be continued to March 12, 2025. As we heard, the applicant has requested the public hearing initiated today be continued to a date specific so that the associated rezoning to be heard by the board concurrent with the comprehensive plan amendment. I understand that there is some opposition to the rezoning, and therefore it will be more efficient to hear the cases concurrently.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, continuing, planning and zoning, item number 15, BNSF Intermodal CPA.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, likewise, this is also a major comprehensive plan amendment. This is in District 4. This is for a site for, was known as the BNSF site. This is 800 acres of what is going to be proposed as a 4,300 acre zoning request that would, is moving forward within the county. That request is anticipated to be heard later this, or earlier next year. The specific request is to modify the land use designation from the White Tanks Grand Avenue area plan from single family to a mixed-use employment. Likewise, the applicant has also requested a continuance to the March 26 hearing to coincide with the rezoning request.
The board will now consider item 15.
Want, make sure that there's no speakers, because I wanted to make it clear.
Chairman, I have no speaker forms for item 15.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have been working on this issue, but this is, this is something that needs to come, there'll be a new board in January, and they need to hear these things. It's a, it's a, it's a big project that is going to have to be worked on pretty hard, not just by my successor, but also all things in between. It's, it's gotten a lot of, it's gotten a lot of news, and I promise, both sides, I'm going to move for a continuance here. So, so it can be vetted out a little bit better. I move that item 15 be continued to March 26, 2025. The applicant has requested the public hearing initiated today be continued to a date specific so that the associated rezoning to be heard by the board concurrent with the comprehensive plan amendment. I understand there is opposition to the rezoning, and it will be more efficient to hear the cases concurrently.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, continuing, under planning and zoning, regular hearing, items 16 and 17, La Salvia Dairy. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Chairman, yes, we did receive two speaker forms in opposition, one from Jeremy Schroeder and Erica Garcia.
Okay, and I understand the applicant is here and ready to present. I will give each side five minutes on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Bill Lally with Tiffany and Bosco, representing the applicant. Just to save some time, maybe we'll have the speakers come up first, and then I can come back afterwards.
Fine.
Thank you.
I will call on Jeremy Schroeder, I'm sorry, can't make out the last name.
Morning. This is Jeremy Schneider. I live on 27th Avenue. I border the dairy. And I kind of have a couple of questions on it. We have, it says on your page, it says, if you have 20% of the residents that don't want it, the border, is that still, can it still be approved through their rezoning? I'm just reading what you have on your, on your little piece.
Tom, would you, could you answer that?
What I believe I was referring to is the requirements from the statute, what would trigger a supermajority vote of the board. What that is, is it's 20% of the property owners in the immediate surrounding area, they also must represent 20% of that land area as well. But the opposite, and it needs to be registered with our department a week prior to the hearing. As of today's date, that supermajority has not been triggered.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, is that the item could still be approved, but it would require a supermajority vote?
If it was triggered.
If it was triggered.
Okay.
Okay. So we have signatures, but I don't know if it went through to you guys. So I was kind of curious about that. And then if the zoning sells, and it's rezoned at R5, if I remember correctly, can they change the plans to the building structures if they resell it? The property? Like, is there to talk about keeping it at two stories and then go up to four stories? If they resell it, can they just change the plans?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the zoning before you today would set design standards. Specifically, they're setting the density at a maximum of 15 dwelling units per acre. I don't believe we've got a specific condition on the height. I'd have to refer to the-
Which would default to the 40 feet.
That's correct. The default, or the standard for height is 40 feet within the R5 zoning district.
So you guys, it'd be four stories, correct? So four stories. They could still, even though I think you guys talked about it being two stories?
It would, it would depend on the height of each story in their design. Typically, within 40 feet, you could get three stories. Four story would be possible, but you'd have a low ceiling height.
Okay. If I remember correctly, you guys talked about it wouldn't go over two stories. So that was one question. I was kind of curious about the setbacks also, because it hasn't been brought up.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Darren just reminded me that the RUPD specifically sets 40 feet or two stories. So it will be limited to two stories or 40.
It is limited to two stories.
Okay. And, yeah, so we got signatures, and all the citizens don't want this, and I know it's within 300 feet, and I don't know about their, I think we're definitely over 20%, but that's what I gotta say about that. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Next person that wishes to speak in opposition, Erica Garcia.
Good morning, Chairman, and congratulations for your guys' awards. My name's Erica Garcia. I live at 2835 West Desert Drive. I live north of the dairy. The dairy is literally in my backyard, and our neighbor's here. I emailed all you guys, I don't know if you guys got it, letters of opposition. We had a petition going, and I got over 260 signatures as of right now. I don't know if you guys got those emails or not. I sent it to the agenda as well. Did you guys get them? Or it doesn't seem like you guys did. Because I know she said that there was nothing else besides us two talking. You guys have over 20 letters of opposition, and they, people emailed you guys on your guys' website, and I know in two days, I had over 20 opposition letters emailed in, from people like me just walking around and getting signatures. Now, this, I'm not, I'm not against progress, but this just would not work in our neighborhood. Mr. Gallardo, you've been out there to the problem we have right now with the mulching. I don't know if you drove down Dobbins. Dobbins was supposed to be a scenery route. It was kind of already developed to be what it is. There's not room for like much development. We got a big canal going down it. You know, like where do you put another lane? Building something in this magnitude in our neighborhood, there's nothing but horse properties around it. That's what we are. You're a farmer. We're all farmers and ranchers there. The developer last meeting said that this lifestyle was a thing of the past. It's not a thing of the past. I'm here and I'm present. My kids are the future of this lifestyle, and so are the kids in my neighborhood. We all ride horses. We like this lifestyle. I'm not saying you can't build, but keep the integrity of our block. We have other blocks like this in Levine as well that-
Okay, thank you.
Now, Mr. Gallardo, please, like, this is our neighborhood. You've seen 27th Avenue and Dobbins. It cannot sustain something like this. It can't. We already have a lot being built around that it can't even sustain. Something in this magnitude, it's-
Thank you.
-going to be devastating to our neighborhood. Thank you, you guys.
Steve, would you like, would you like the applicant to?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Bill Lally with Tiffany and Bosco, 2525 East Camelback Road here, representing the applicant. And I'll walk you through a couple exhibits, just to kind of give you context of the area, but then also try to address some of the questions. This exhibit in front of you really shows sort of the Levine area and the growth of the area, and really what has happened over the area, over the last few years, since the 202 South Mountain Freeway has been added. Large amounts of growth have happened on all of the arterials that connect with the 202. This now is on the east side of the 202. This is now infill, in terms of what's happening in Levine area. Tremendous amount of growth. This is a large landowner, La Salvia Dairy, who's owned the property for a very long time, generations. And for many years, they watched a lot of growth happen around them, and they operated their dairy, and they made sure that they weren't complaining about all of the growth in the area. But now that growth has come to their front doorstep, and I'll walk you through, if you go to the next exhibit, it'll show you a little bit of what's happening in the area. The red map is the dairy property. To the south of it is a property in purple, which is in City of Phoenix, which is medium-density residential, 6,000 square foot lots. Directly to the west of it, in the yellow that surrounds the green, is R3 Maricopa County zoning. So this is multifamily zoning that exists there today. Not recently, but for many, many years. So Dobbins Road, for many years, is, has anticipated to be a higher-density, higher-intensity development. The green property is in City of Phoenix, is designed with 3,000 square foot lots. So these are townhomes and condos, very, very similar to what we're proposing on our project today. Further to the west, you'll see the purple is a three-story apartment complex approved in City of Phoenix. So the densities and intensities that we're talking about today are not out of character with the area. A lot of the speakers and some of the letters that were submitted to the county said, no apartments. We don't want apartments. We don't want high-density apartments. So we heard that, and we worked with staff on incorporating a number of stipulations and changes to the application, reducing the density considerably from what would be allowed in this category of 25 to 35 DU, down to 15. So really, what we're talking about is a condo, townhome, or build-for-rent type of product at that density. Apartments are normally in that 25 to 30 DU, which is what's down the street. We also put a stipulation in there for two stories. So most apartment complexes are three stories and above. In order to make it financing, that that's typically the process for development of apartments. What we tried to do is make sure that it was very clear to the community, we're not zoning this for apartment complexes. It's not a 25 DU three-story apartment that is actually down the street. We wanted to make sure that this is more of a medium-density, attainable housing type of product that's sort of missing in this particular area, given that the freeway is just a few miles to the west, given there is a large park to the west that also takes up a lot of the developable land in the area. This makes a lot of sense. Now, a lot of the residents who wrote in also said, no more apartments. It's going to affect our lifestyle. They are also the large lot landowners to the north of us. This project will access Dobbins Road. It will do the road improvements along Dobbins Road. So the access, the intensity, will be on Dobbins Road, not to the north into the residential neighborhood. So, Mr. Chairman and board members, be happy to answer any questions. I think the questions about the 20% border was answered, that site planning changes, whether we can change the stories. Clearly, we can't do that. You are stipulating us today to two stories and 40 feet. So that is a hard requirement that can't be changed, whether we sell it to a builder or don't. So, Mr. Chairman, members, be happy to have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, and I don't know if it's for Bill or staff, because I've been on, I go on Dobbins every day. I don't even live in Levine, but I'm on Dobbins every day because of the schools, and it's just, all my work is in Levine, a lot of it. And so, talk to me about the Dobbins Road, because Dobbins Road was at one point a very rural-type setting. It's not like that anymore. You're seeing, like you said, there's an apartment complex right there on Dobbins now, where apartments were unheard of in Levine a few years ago. Now you're seeing them through the City of Phoenix, additional housing, it's booming. What, what do we foresee Dobbins looking like, and how is that going to address the additional traffic on Dobbins?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Gallardo, if we went to the very last slide of our presentation, we do have the City of Phoenix Street Roadway Network Streets Classification map. And so we've done that analysis ourselves. If this was in the county, or whether it was in the city, the city has anticipated this as a major collector, and allows for, and has accommodated this type of development and intensity on the roadways. We will build out to City of Phoenix standards. Once we go through the plating stages here in Maricopa County, or annex into the city, they will require, so if you can go one more, sorry about that, that's, yeah, there we go. So this is the Streets Classification Network map, Supervisor Gallardo, that City of Phoenix requires. And so, we will abide by that. They have gone through their planning process. They wouldn't have approved a three-story apartment complex down the street if Dobbins Road wasn't built or planned to accommodate the type of traffic. They wouldn't have put the 202 freeway a mile or so away if the arterial roads going east and west did not accommodate future growth. So we will abide by the City of Phoenix Transportation Plan. McDOT will hold us to account on those plans. The roadway network, once built out, it is busy today, because a lot of the dairies have not built out those half-street roadways. But once those dairies, particularly this one, and to make note, the dairy just to the west of us wrote a letter of support as well. And so, the most impacted neighbor is the large lot dairy to our west. There's a letter of support in the packet from them as well. And so, they're in support of it. They understand the impact of Dobbins Road. But we believe that Dobbins Road will be built out to accommodate this type of density.
If there's any other questions? Just a quick question. Bill, is that dairy still in existence? Do they still have cows there? Or if not, yeah?
The applicant or the next door?
The applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I believe they're winding down operations now, but historically, the La Salvia Dairy has been a generational dairy. It's been in operation for many, many years. You understand better than anyone. If you're not 500 acres or more in the dairy world, it's a little harder to make it work. So I believe that they are winding down operations.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? The board will consider items 16 and 17.
Mr. Chairman, I will continue to work with the councilwoman in this area, and the City of Phoenix. We didn't make sure, we really had to put a focus on Dobbins Road, making sure that is truly filled or built out in a way to handle the travel. You get it from the 202 all the way through. You have the golf course just down the street as well. It's just, it has, really has been robust over the years. Like I said, I'm on there all the time. So I will continue to work with the councilwoman to ensure that Dobbins is a focus. But, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve- But, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve, what item, are we on, I lost my?
16 and 17.
There we are. I move that we approve items 16 and 17.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll second, just with a comment. You know, this is, this is the tough part of watching growth in the, in, in this area, you know? Farms and, and fields that were there for generations have been impacted by growth and impacted to the point where now you have a longtime dairying family that's part, they want to, I'm sorry, but they want to sell their land. It's become urbanized and I know that the residents have seen that too. And at least there's a kind of almost a toehold with dairies and it's still, it's still agriculture. But, but we also, I know I believe in property rights and they, they want to do something with their property. They want to quit dairying and they want to sell their property. And hearing that it's going to a use or that's going to be a lower of density, they, they could have sold it and be asking for higher density and sell it to the highest bidder. And believe me, there's people that want much more residential units and apartments and to, to get the higher, higher value for that property. So, I, I kind of, I've just letting you know, I feel for, I feel for the neighbors out there and I feel, I feel for that dairying family that is, find it probably hard enough now to continue operating as a dairy in this environment. So, I'll second your motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Regular agenda, item 18, Sonoran Landings. As I've mentioned before, we will have a motion to continue. I, I do want to make a couple of comments before we entertain that motion. You know, this has been a very emotional issue and I really feel that it should be dealt with at the City of Chandler rather than in Maricopa County. So that people from all sides of the issue can really have a voice in the ultimate decisions surrounding the property. So I'm, I'm encouraging Chandler to annex the property and then go through this process with their own planning and zoning people and let their people be heard and make the decision based on that. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that agenda item 18 be continued indefinitely. It should be brought back before the Board of Supervisors' once revised documents have been prepared, clearly prohibiting multifamily residential uses from the proposed IND-2IUPD zoning. This will bring zoning in concert with the city's general plan and airpark area plan and will address the community opposition.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under, under statutory hearings, Clerk of the Board, item 19, liquor license application, Hanging Gardens, Mediterranean Food, items 20 and 21. Impact Statement Hearing for Tolson Farms 1 and 2 Irrigation Water Delivery Districts, item 22, de-annexation from the City of Goodyear to Maricopa County. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 19 through 22?
Chairman, Supervisors, I do have three speaker forms and these are on items 20 and 21. I do have a speaker form in favor from Barry Paisley, wishes to register position in favor and is available to speak if necessary. In opposition, Jerry Lewis is available to speak if necessary, wishes to register position in opposition. And Randy Lowry wishes to speak, I'm sorry. Marked all three, speak in opposition only if necessary and register position in opposition.
Okay, and I would point out that today's action is to allow signature gathering. It is not to approve the formation. So based on that, are there still people who would like to speak? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 19, 20, and 21, 22, is that correct? Yes.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under statutory hearings, transportation, items 23 through 25. Patent easement abandonments as listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 23 through 25?
I have none for these items, Chairman.
The board will now consider items 23 through 25.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under statutory hearings, air quality, item 26, Rule 203 Emission Reduction Credit General Requirements. 27, Rule 313, incinerators, burn-off ovens, and crematoriums. Item 28, Rule 327, organic material processing. Item 29, Rule 335, architectural coatings. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on these items?
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms. Blue Crawley wishes to speak on item number 26, followed by Lumar Garza. She wishes to speak on item number 28.
Mine isn't for just 26, it's 26 through 29. What this is, is your attempts on air quality and trying to keep the progress going, going on your freeways and roadways because if you don't have the good air quality plan, you lose the federal funding, et cetera, et cetera. Well, when I look at all of what you're doing, I'm also trying to find out what are you doing on the mass transit side? Now, that legislation did not pass. You didn't get the 60%. And if you are going according to the rule of law, and somebody did bring that up to you during the last set of, oh, it was me. I said, hey, you guys know that you're going to have to get 60%. It's not going to be easy. You need to get it so that everybody wants it. And there was nothing from the board or staff or anything saying, oh, no, we don't have to worry about that. So, when now you have okayed that and it wasn't the amount that it says, there is a point of integrity I'm having a problem with. But then I go to the second part of it. What is the MAG plan for transit? You don't have one. So, I'm hoping that after you leave, you're able to get and work with them to get the plan that should be there because the thing that we wrote back in the 80s that you only implemented half of, and now you say you're going to double what you have, which would then get it back to the 80s plan, why are you doing an 80s plan for 40 years from now or 20 years from now? You need to do it right and you need to do it for the region and it needs to be an actual, not just, well, we're going to put 33 point whatever percent to the rail and the bus.
Thank you, Blue.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move approval for items 26 through 29, but also make two comments. I want to thank Phil McNeely for all the hard work that he's done in these areas and almost the entire time I've been here. So, Phil, it's been an honor. I'm sorry, are you?
We do have one more speaker.
Yes.
Go ahead. I can't wait.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move approval for items 26 through 29, but also make two comments. I want to thank Phil McNeely for all the hard work that he's done in these areas and almost the entire time I've been here. So, Phil, it's been an honor. I'm sorry, are you?
We do have one more speaker.
Yes.
Go ahead. I can't wait.
One more is Betty Garza, homeless visiting. I just wanted to outline last time that Maricopa, Phoenix is a political subdivision of Arizona, not Florida, just to correct that. On number 26, why are you attacking the farting cows again? Because you are in this in your gibberish way and your word salad, you are taking contingency measures for reducing volatile organic compound emissions from organic material processing operations. How many of you remember Gore, Al Gore? Can we stop with this? And this ties into number 29, something about architectural coating? What is that? Paint? You're going to deny architectural coating? What is that? Please define it. And if you do, and if we don't follow these, what is the punishment for you not controlling cow farts? Thank you.
Okay, just as I thought. Spectacular. So.
Awakening the masses.
Oh, God.
No, I need an answer because you're wasting my time.
There's no question.
He is wasting my time. I have a question.
I have approval.
Can you please get one of the individuals here, like you do for everybody else?
Second.
For them to answer the question.
We have a motion.
Is it on record that you refuse to answer my question? Is it on record that you refuse to answer my question?
Call the vote. There's a motion and a second on the table.
Is it on record that you refuse to answer my question?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Now, since I have 23 seconds left.
There's not a stronger proponent of dairy industry on this board.
It cut once again my time for 23 seconds. Alrighty.
So, meanwhile, again, thanks, Phil McNeely, for, for all of the hard work that, that you've put. And I also wanted to just point out, I don't know if he's still here, but Blue Crawley spoke three times. So I want to make sure, Blue, are you, if, if you have a public comment, I think we need to, Blue, we need to pull your public comment. You got, you got two and.
I got three.
Well, that's all you're going to get. Thank you, Blue. Appreciate it.
Okay, under County Officers, Board of Supervisors. Item 30, resignation of Lenny McCawski, Constable, Manistee Justice Precinct. Item 31, appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. Item 32 through 38, community solutions funding for Mesa Unified School District, New River Community Park Playground renovation, National High School Mock Trial, Steered Straight, Just Communities, Solari, and City of Phoenix.
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms on item number 33. That is the community solutions funding for the New River Community Park Playground renovation. First speaker, Lori Barone, followed by Cindy Tindick.
Okay, item 33 is taking funding for a New River Community Park Playground renovation. It doesn't look like there's a, a positive or negative to the budget, but it's $500,000. And I just, I, my question is, it's the same thing with item number 33 and item 99. Why is it on the agenda twice? I'd like to know. And the playground renovation with an expected start date of today. At first glance, it appears this money is going to be renovating a playground. It is primarily intended to cover the cost of initiatives, it says, that carry the potential of advancing Maricopa County's strategic goals. Mr. Chair and Board, what is meant by the wording to cover the cost of initiatives, one? Number two, does the $500,000 not completely cover the renovation? And three, if not, what exactly is the $500,000 going to cover?
County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Blanca Caviero can come up to answer those questions. But I will quickly, as she's coming up, I will quickly answer. 33 is to approve the community solutions funding and 99 is an amendment with the parks in order to utilize the funding.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And I apologize, can she please repeat the question to make sure I answer it correctly?
What is meant by the wording to cover the cost of initiatives, quote unquote? Number two, does it not, the $500,000 not completely cover the renovation? And number three, if not, what exactly is the $500,000 going to cover?
The, the $500,000 is going to cover the cost of a new playground. And I do believe that the total cost exceeds $500,000, but there was also a contribution from, I believe, the vendor Game Time. We do have the director for parks and rec who can come up and ensure that those, that information is correct.
What are the initiatives that you're discussing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for items 30 through 38. I'd like to make comments for items.
You didn't call him up.
Excuse me.
Was bringing him up to explain it.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I want to repeat. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for items 30 through 38.
I called for.
And I'd like to make.
Director.
I'm going to repeat for the third time, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for items 30 through 38. And I'd like to, excuse me, ma'am. Takes one to know one. And I'd like to make comments for items 31 and 32.
I, I would second that. I think we do have a speaker in favor of this item though, if, if possible. Mr. Chair.
Madam Clerk.
Item 33, Cindy Tindick, in favor.
Hi, I am a member of the New River Kiwanis Group who is, have been the stewards of the Maricopa County Park in question. Up to this point, we have received, as long as I have been involved and my family's been involved, which has been upwards of 25 years, we have not received any county funding for our park. We have graciously been awarded this. We have a very small current playground. It was placed, I would say, 20 years ago. It has become significantly rundown and it is currently a safety hazard. So we are trying to renovate and, and replace that equipment. And the plan that we have been presented and that has been presented to you also includes a adult fitness space, which will continue to serve not just the children in our community, but other members as well. The park itself is 80 acres. The percentage of the park that the playground is going on is currently one of our ballfields. We do have additional plans to raise additional funding to renovate our current ballfields as well as continue maintenance on the equestrian arena that we have there, which memorializes a young equestrian who passed away in the TWA flight. And we are just hoping to continue to serve our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Did we get a second?
Yes, I seconded and would, would like to speak after Supervisor Gallardo.
First of all, I have to thank the Speaker for those wonderful remarks and it's just amazing to see the work going on there. Would hate to see why anyone would be against a playground. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, in item number 31, I just want to congratulate Tyson Schlink, who's been appointed to the Community Development Advisory Committee, which is a really important role here. And Tyson has just been a pillar of the community. I know him personally and I thank him for standing up and serving Maricopa County. He's done so in a myriad of ways and now he's going to do this in a new role. And I appreciate Tyson's willingness to serve on the CDAC to represent District 2. And I want to thank Kevin Medaba for, who previously served District 2 on the CDAC's board and I want to thank him for his service. Item number 32, this is really important. This is community solutions funding for the Mesa Unified School Districts, the Mesa Youth Creative Agency. This is just incredible. While classroom learning is an integral part of education, getting students out into the real world with internships and work-based learning experiences enables them to kickstart their careers with more confidence. I am proud to support the Mesa Youth Creative Agency and invest in the creative and professional development of high school students across the Mesa Unified School District. The NYCA is a Mesa Public Schools Workforce Development Program. Workforce development is an important issue for me. And this is the first youth creative agency in the United States that operates as a real business and goes head-to-head with competitors in the agency space. Students gain access to paid internships, college and career planning workshops, connections to trade schools, and higher education institutions, certifications in a variety of creative design programs, and they help with career-building tools like resumes, digital portfolios, LinkedIn profiles. And I want to congratulate the Mesa School System for this fantastic program and I'm extremely proud to help contribute in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And really excited to be able to support the, this half-million-dollar contribution to the New River Community Park. I've been out there several times during my time on the board and I can speak to the fact that they're, they're in great need of assistance and support. So I appreciate this opportunity to provide investment out there. That is, out in unincorporated Maricopa County, proud to represent the area and excited about the improvements that we'll be able to put in place out there. Also, we have several other items that we'll be using community solutions funds for, including the National High School Mock Trial Program. The City of Phoenix and Maricopa County are very proud to be hosting the 2025 National High School Mock Trial Tournament, which is, will have almost 1,000 high school students, lawyers, judges, and others from around the country here. So, this will be a nice economic development opportunity for the City of Phoenix and for the county, as well as supporting 100,000 for the U.S. Vets facility within District 3. And proud to partner with the City of Phoenix and others to make sure that our vets have the housing that they deserve as a result of their service to our country. So, want to thank my colleagues for their support on this. And thank you for staff with their hard work to put all these projects together before the end of the year. Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I wanted to point out the service on item number 30, the resignation of Lenny McCloskey. Lenny, I am so sorry. Lenny invited me to his going-away party yesterday, and I just couldn't break away from the ranch and what I was doing out there. So, Lenny has just absolutely been the quintessential, hard-working, great constable. In fact, the constables have used him at times. He works in an incredibly busy area in downtown Glendale with all the apartments. It is a very tough job at times, a very emotional job. What is transpiring in our community, evictions. Our constables are seeing some very tough stories right now. And, but that's not why Lenny retired. Lenny retired to, what I feel is very familiar, get back to his family, get back to his other business. But I remember riding with Lenny probably about a year and a half into my, into my first term to figure out what constables do, because there was questions about, you know, their efficiency, I guess. They are elected officials. And it was hard to keep up with Lenny, riding with him. And he was out of that vehicle and so many doors at apartment buildings. It was just hard to just keep jumping out and talking and seeing these issues even back then. So, Lenny, thank you so much. You've been on the phone with me over a decade, talking about this, going to breakfast, sponsoring a breakfast for me at least once a year with all the constables. And I highly recommend my successor doing the same thing, because it's, it really, really brings to heart what we're about at the county. So, thank you, Lenny.
Thank you, Supervisor, and that motion does pass. Continuing, clerk of the board, item 39, special event license for Wilderness Volunteers. Under constables, item 40, fix the salaries of constables elected. Item 41 through 42, funding for Constables Ethics Standards and Training Board. Under county attorney, items 43 through 45, funding from U.S. Department of Justice. Item 46, Arizona Department of Public Health Anti-Human Traffic Grant. And item 47 has been withdrawn.
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms. On item number 46, Mr. Dan Schroder wishes to speak in favor, followed by Leslie Shepard, both on item number 46.
All right. Well, I'm Dan Schroder and Board Supervisor Hickman, Jack Sellers and Board of Supervisors. This is for Agenda Item Number 46. It's to help against human trafficking. This is something that Trump made top agenda. Human trafficking is perpetrated by corrupt unconstitutional elections all over the world right now. A huge sting operation's happening to take down people in leadership positions that have participated or turned a blind eye to the abuse of this modern-day slavery. This Agenda item is supported by Executive Orders 13903 and 13818, one of the very first ones Trump passed. It will be swift on all people, and even more so on people who've taken an oath to uphold the Constitution, yet have compromised for it, compromised it for self-gain. Mr. Chair and Board, you have certified the corrupt governor, Secretary of State, and Attorney General through unconstitutional elections. In previous meetings, you've patted each other on the back about brave decisions to certify the 2020 election. And if you're wondering why we, the people, are so angry and we come to these meetings calling you out, it's because you guys were involved in stealing the 2020 election.
Mr. Chair, this is off-topic. It's out of order.
No, it's not. I'm in, I'm, I'm talking about the human trafficking.
Way to wedge that in.
15 seconds.
All right. Well, the human trafficking stems from stolen elections. That's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Next up, Leslie Shepard, also wishes to speak on item 46.
Okay. Agenda item number 46, Department of Public Safety for $2,282. Well, I just want to read something. January 31, 2020, Donald Trump signed Executive Order 13903. In this, in this order, Section 1, and this is all dealing with human trafficking, because that's what this Agenda item is, policy, "Human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery throughout the United States and throughout the world. You may say it's fake news, but human trafficking is the biggest money-making business there is on the face of the earth right now, and you will all be responsible." So, if you want to sit there and murmur and make fun of people, that's fine. It's not my judgment, it's yours. "Throughout the United States and around the world, human trafficking tears apart communities, fuels criminal activity, and threatens national security of the United States. It is estimated that millions of individuals are trafficked around the world each year, including into and within the United States. As the United States continues to lead in the global fight against human trafficking, we must remain relentless in resolving to eradicate in our cities suburbs, rural communities, and tribal lands and all other transportation networks. Human trafficking in the United States takes many forms, and it can involve exploitation of both adults and children for labor sex. 21st-century technology and the proliferation of the Internet and the mobile devices have helped facilitate the crimes of child sex trafficking and other forms of child exploitation. Consequently, the number of reports in the National Center for missing and exploited children of online photos and videos of the children being sexually abused is at record levels. It's not a conspiracy." Mr. Chair, who is the contact setting up the meeting regarding our funding these dollars? Who is the person that is, who's in charge of this specific Agenda item? So that I can contact them.
County manager?
Chairman, this is a Maricopa County Attorney Agenda item.
And so, who's the contact person there for that? It's not a vague one.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Blangado is in, is here. Is he here from the, oh, Tom can come up.
Tom Liddy?
Contact person is Rachel Mitchell, County Attorney, Maricopa County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rachel Mitchell's not doing her job.
Oh, you're done.
Who is the one that put it on the agenda?
Your time is up, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 39 through 47.
And the thankful lady that you thanked, Thomas Galvin, who said she gave a good answer. You're right. In 15 seconds, she answered the question that Lori Barone asked. And I thank her again for, on your behalf as well.
Would you please cut off the microphone? And if she doesn't quit yelling at us, I'll have her removed.
Mr. Chairman, once again, so moved.
Okay. We have a motion to approve items 36, 39 through 46.
Bill, second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under county attorney, continued, item 48, transfer of owner of retiring K-9 Ellie. The board will now consider item 48, and it does require a roll-call vote.
Move approval on item number 48, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Galvin?
Aye.
Supervisor Gates?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Sellers?
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Under sheriff, item 49, administration correction of one-time additions to fleet. Item 50, donations. Item 51 through 55, IGAs and MOUs with Gila River Indian Community, City of Buckeye, Tempe Elementary School District, Federal Bureau of Investigation, Drug Enforcement Administration. Item 56, one-time addition to fleet and exemption from markings.
Chairman, I do have one speaker form from Mr. Joe Hoff. He wishes to speak on item number 52. That is, the IGA with the City of Buckeye.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. City of Buckeye regarding high-intensity drug trafficking area. Approve an intergovernmental agreement IGA with the City of Buckeye regarding HIDTA that allows Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to reimburse a percentage of overtime benefits and provide certain equipment for high-intensity drug trafficking area. Mr. Chair, as many, as much as many of us love our law enforcement at various levels. That being said, my question is, what is meant by reimbursing a percentage of overtime benefits? Why would only a percentage be reimbursed? Overtime benefits, according to this Agenda items, have a $30,000 cap on it. Why the $30,000 cap? Drug trafficking is important. So, why are we capping people who are serving in this area? Why?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Being that this is in Buckeye, a district that you and I, a municipality, we share. Can we have Mr. Printeville come up and speak to this for the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, please?
Sure.
I thought you were going to make a motion. I was going to second it. Well, I'm ready to make a motion. I just, we can, we can get an explanation and...
Good morning, Chairman Sellers, members of the board.
Did you get a chance to hear that question?
I did. I did. It's the percentages that we, that we reimburse Buckeye are just based on the funding that we receive. So, when we participate in these Drug Task Force events, we're expected to fund a little bit of it as well. So, Buckeye does the same. We only reimburse 15% of their overtime costs. We pretty much have to spread that money around. That's really all I can say. I'd love to have it be fully funded, but that's the money we get from HIDA.
So, this is, this is what we can do to help the Buckeye Police Department to continue on and have them do this vital effort and be paid in full for their overtime.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, so, sir, the City of Buckeye covers the rest of the cost for the overtime, correct?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
They may have funding from other agencies that we're not aware of, but for this task force, they cover however they need to.
So, this is about shared costs between the county and the city? This is not about capping overtime at 30,000, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Hoff, do you understand that?
Yes. Is that, is that the total answer to my question?
Yes, it is.
Is that everything?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that your, was that the question you wrote down?
That was the question, yeah.
Was...
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Is that the question you wrote down? Is that the question you had for us, the full question? Okay. I didn't know. I don't think he wrote that question, but he might have. Jeez. Okay.
All right.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 49 through 56.
I have a motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under treasurer, item 57, offer on tax-dead-land parcel 501-37-876. The board will now consider item 57.
Move to approve item number 57, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, do you have to accept one of the offers? We have two offers on that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I only saw the second offer, offer to, to move approval on item number offer two, because it is the highest offer.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under treasurer, item 58, offer on tax-dead-land parcel 501-37-877.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on accepting, looks like the only offer, of $50 for item number 58.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under treasurer, item 59, offer on tax-dead-land parcel 201-30-143. Is there a motion to accept one of the offers?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve offer number three on the amount of $401, being that it is the highest-placed offer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under judicial branch, Superior Court, item 60, fill-the-gap plan. The board will now consider item 60.
Move to approve item number 60, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under county offices and departments, air quality, item 61, amend agreement with City of Mesa. Under elections, item 62, precinct committeement. Under emergency management, item 63, funds from Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. Under enterprise technology, item 65 and, item 64 and 65, new county policies, data classification A2244, and artificial intelligence usage, item A2247. Are there any speakers on these items?
Chairman, I have none.
Board will now consider items 61 through 65.
Move to approve items 61 through 65, Mr. Chairman.
Second with the comment.
We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Enterprise Technology for items 64 and 65, which includes a new data classification policy and also a new artificial intelligence policy. I want to thank the team for really being forward-looking and pioneers on this within government. So, we're grateful for Rich MacAdie and the entire team. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under environmental services, item 66. Have I already done this?
Nope.
No? Okay. IGA with City of Phoenix. Under Facilities Management, item 67, Amend IGA with Arizona Department of Administration. Item 68, Workplace Standards Policy A1926. Item 69, Updates to Projects Policy A1920. Under Finance, item 70, American Rescue Plan Act Expenditure Approvals and Budget Adjustments. Item 71, Budget Adjustment for Emergency Operations Center CIP Project Grant. Item 72, Mid-Year Pay for Performance Adjustment. Item 73, MOU Between Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and Maricopa County Human Services Department. The board will now consider items 66 through 73.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask if we can move item number 70, uh, to go by itself? If, if we could take item 70 alone?
And Chairman, I do have one speaker form, and I apologize. Dr. Deepta Batacharia wishes to speak on 70. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like, uh, to vote on the ones, but I want to, I want to talk to, uh, about item number 70 because we have some pros in the audience. I want to know a little bit more about this project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 66 through 69 and 71 through 73.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, um, item number 70 was, uh, among the other things, but there's one I want to point out because, because this, this county moved awfully quick. And I thank you, Jen Pokorski and, and the group. Um, this was a vital project that we identified earlier, uh, but, but we were able to find, uh, the ability to help again. So I was hoping that, uh, Dr. Deepta Batacharia, I'm, I'm gonna butcher that doctor, Batacharia, close, uh, and, uh, Ms. Alyssa Lyons-Sloan, if you could come up for, you want to, you want to defer your comments? Okay, because I, it was very nice to hear your comments when, when this thing had a ribbon cutting. So I appreciate your work in that. But, um, doctor, thank you for joining us. And I got, I got to hear, and some of us got to hear a great speech about the CAMI, uh, the U of A CAMI project and what's, and what is going on in central Phoenix. And, um, moved by it, actually, um, by, by researchers now that are gonna have a place. Um, I've had a, uh, I've had a very, very close relative of mine, um, be able to survive cancer to this point because of immunotherapy techniques, uh, that were, were researched, uh, in another state. And, um, he was able to live and be the greatest godfather ever. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about this project, um, at this late time.
Sure, of course. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and especially you, Supervisor Hickman, I really appreciate the support that you've already given to the Center for Advanced Molecular and Immunological Therapies. Um, the, the mission of CAMI is to really develop new therapies, um, based upon all the insights that we've learned over the past few decades on how the immune system works and the key drivers of disease. Um, and so now we see really on the horizon that there are ways to really attack cancer and just the cancer without damaging all of the surrounding tissues. Um, and that's really not the only insight that we've gained. I mean, there's just been exponential growth in our knowledge of the immune system. And so I think this is really the right time to capitalize on that basic knowledge. And the way that CAMI is going to work is to take some of these promising ideas, uh, make sure that they see their time, um, they get the proof of concept being done within CAMI. Um, and we're renting space right now from the College of Medicine Phoenix, but it'll be a new building very soon. Uh, and then really take some of those most promising ideas and then take those teams and then launch new biotechnology companies within the Phoenix and, and the Maricopa County, en route to developing some of those therapies. And then we basically crank that flywheel. What we know, though, is just the intrinsic nature of research is that a lot of those ideas won't work out. We know that a lot of those companies won't necessarily lead to new blockbuster therapies. So it's really a function of shots on goal. Um, and so these resources allow us to get some more of those shots on goal and not only increase the chances that will make, you know, impactful new therapies, um, but also really give a lift to the local economy in terms of developing that biotechnology ecosystem and, and boosting up new high-paying jobs. So I really appreciate all that the, um, council has already done. Uh, and I really appreciate, um, the support that your board is considering it now.
And, and Mr. Chairman, um, I, I don't mind seeing, uh, my alma mater, the University of Arizona, as they keep getting jacked stomp by ASU, uh, here in this county, uh, to be able to, uh, to be able to provide a little footprint for them and, and their students, uh, here to, to continue on this vital, this vital road as well as, um, you know, I think we, we probably got some phone calls from Mayor Gallego also, uh, that understands how important this is. And especially, um, you know, some money freed up from the West Valley that we could spend right in the heart of Maricopa County. It's not in my district, uh, but it's in some of yours. And, uh, I, I'm very appreciative of, of the work that's gonna go towards us.
Thank you. And, and I'll just comment that I, I certainly appreciate the work that you're doing, uh, because my wife experienced cancer two different times, 10 years apart. And the thing I became very aware of was that the second time, the treatments were much more difficult because of how much she had been compromised by the first treatments. Thank you.
So have we made a motion?
We don't have a motion for 70.
If we haven't made a motion, I'd be happy to make a motion for all, all of these projects, but, uh, especially the one we just heard about, item number 70. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Finance, Continued, Items 74 through 77, MOUs with Sun City West Posse, Sun City Posse, Sun City West Prides, and Sun City Prides. Item 78, Funds Transfer Warrants. Under Human Resources, 79, Market Ranges. Item 80, Revision to Employee Leave Policy, HR2415. Under Human Services, item 81, Receipt of Carryover Funding and Reduction.
Chairman, I do have a speaker form. Barbara Ratty wishes to speak on item number 75, MOU with Sun City Posse.
My name's Barbara Ratty, and I have three questions. The first question is a two-part question. And so who's ever gonna answer my questions, I'd like you to write them down so you could answer them in the same order. Okay, so 75 is, um, the county wants to provide Sun City Posse with $30,000. Okay, part one of that question is, what is the reason this neighborhood merits $30,000? Part two, um, on the men, Agenda Items 74, 75, 76, and 77 all mention $30,000 for this purpose. So is it really 30,000 or is it really 120,000? Are you giving them 30,000 for each one of these Agenda Items? Okay, my second question is, um, uh, oh gosh, okay. What actions can be taken so that other communities could receive an incentive such as this for their community, patrolling services to the community it serves, and support community safety through a volunteer force? What actions can be taken that other communities could get this same incentive? And my third one is, and who came up with the figure of $30,000? And my question is regarding all of this is because I myself live in a neighborhood that is beginning to experiencing thefts and such. So how could my neighborhood get this advantage?
Mr. Chairman, I think I would love to answer your questions on this one, Ms. Ratty. I, I do believe you live in my district.
I do, yes.
Okay. Uh, Sun City and Sun City West are the largest unincorporated, uh, towns, I think, in the United States. Uh, so basically, Maricopa County is their government. And what you're looking at right now, basically, as Supervisor District Four, uh, I get to be their mayor for the last 11 years. And I've, I've, I've loved every second. Um, the Sun City Prides, Sun City West Prides, Sun City Posse, and Sun City West, uh, Sun City West Posse are citizens groups, uh, that have been formed many years ago, uh, to do government functions, uh, helping with law enforcement, uh, helping with the beautification, a-actually helping with roadwork. Uh, that, that's the prides. Uh, I couldn't be happier if you wanted to start up, uh, some organizations like this in your, in your area. It takes a lot. It's a tradition of hard work. And it's a tradition of all these people not getting paid to go out on Saturdays, Sundays, Tuesdays because they enjoy their retirement by helping out, uh, their fellow residents. They're not being told to. They're volunteering it. So I would love and implore everyone to reach out and figure out what the prides of both, uh, communities, what the posse's of both communities do for their, their fellow residents and their fellow citizens. Uh, they are groups that have saved Maricopa County millions of dollars by performing volunteer service. Uh, the money comes from actually every supervisor district, uh, on our, the use of our landfills. There are tipping fees. And these tipping fees generate money slowly over time, uh, to go towards either individual board use or we can vote as a, put it all together and try to do something with it. I looked at this and I have saved a lot of money, uh, over my 11 years to get it to this point. Uh, Max Wilson, who was my predecessor, actually, that retired, uh, because, due to health reasons, he left a little bit of money in, in that bank account for me. Uh, I made sure that I'm leaving, if not as much, but more for my successor to be able to look into this community and try to use this money in a way that will help their community. I have always been, I have a lot of municipalities in my, in my, uh, district, but unincorporated, that's our role as a government function. We are, uh, over unincorporated, Sun City and Sun City West included. So, thank you. This is $30,000 to each of these organizations to continue to be able to fund fertilizer purchases, uh, home checks for older citizens. Sometimes people call from the East Coast and haven't heard from their mom or grandma and wonder if she's still alive in her living room. That's what the posse does. They help with, they help keep everybody safe. They do community neighborhood watches. So I implore you, um, if you want to take the time and the effort to start up an organization like this for your community and unincorporated. You live in unincorporated, right? Or do you, or do you live in a city? Do you, do you live in a municipality or do you live in unincorporated?
Well, I live in Waddell.
Okay, so...
So I think we're nothing.
The, the vast majority of that is unincorporated. So I appreciate it. If you would love to start, Debbie Lesko will be here to help you start up an organization like that and, uh, be, be able to provide volunteer service for, for people.
Would I do that through my LD?
This is not having anything to do with politics. This has everything to do with citizen involvement. So, um, anyway, you can give the posse or the, or the prides a, a phone call and see how you can, uh, start up an organization like this. And I would, I'm assuming Debbie would be really happy to support it. But thank you for the questions. I, I, I think I just made my case for my board that how important this $30,000 to each organization is. They are very important to me and have been extremely helpful. So...
Okay, could I ask you one, like, who could I contact? I mean, who, to find you about that?
My, my district, my office will get in touch with you, Ms. Ratty.
Thank you very much.
We'll get you that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Chairman, no other speakers.
The board will now consider items 74 through 81.
Happy to approve items 74 through 81, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Human Services, Continued, Items 82 through 94, Amend Agreements and Contracts with City of Surprise, East Valley Institute of Technology, Mesa Unified School District Four, Arizona Department of Economic Security, City of Glendale, City of El Mirage, City of Tolleson, City of Avondale, UMOM, Guadalupe Community Development Corporation, HOM Incorporated, Newtown Community Development Corporation.
Chairman, I do have a few speaker forms. I have speaker forms to speak on item 83, 84, 85, and two speakers on item number two. I will first call on Jamie Martin, wishes to speak on, uh, item number 83, which is the Amendment to IGA with East Valley Institute of Technology.
Hi, my name is Jamie Weinauer Martin, and I'm here to talk to the chairman and the board today about Agenda Item 83, East Valley Institute of Technology for Hope Tech. The agenda says that the purpose of the agreement is for the county to provide support to a newly-built 64-bed residence hall for youth transitioning out of the foster care system. The county provided EVIT with 150,000 in community solutions funds. My questions are, who's overseeing this project from a contract perspective? Who's overseeing the terms and conditions of this are being enforced? Um, what are the age ranges for the youth at this facility? And what are the genders? Is it gonna be a co-ed facility or, uh, one or the other?
County Manager?
Thank you, Chairman. Marcy Flanagan can come up to help answer those questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Marcy Flanagan, Assistant County Manager. Uh, for this program, who oversees the contracts are within our departments. All of our departments have, uh, program staff that oversee all of the contracts to ensure the terms and conditions are met. And as far as aging out of foster care, that happens when you turn 18. Uh, so it'll be serving those kids that are aging out of the system. And they do serve both male and female.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? I'm not, I thought, this is my first time doing this. Sorry, you guys. Um, so I understand that you're saying that you guys oversee the contract. Who's overseeing the project?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so it'll be in combination. It'll be our staff that oversees the contract work and keeps in contact with, um, EVIT, but it's the staff in the, in the, the East Valley Institute of Technology, Hope Tech, that'll oversee the program itself on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
How will you know it's working successfully?
Next speaker, please.
Next up is Dawn Adams, item number 84, Amendment to IGA with Mesa Unified School District. Next up, Leslie Shepherd.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Mesa Unified School District Four, to implement, implement the Mesa Youth Creative Agency, 1.29 million to receive. Students will receive training, opportunities to support local employees with their media presence. A couple of questions I have on this agenda. First, this Agenda Item along with several other million-plus Agenda Items on the county website, quote, "This is a draft agenda and is subject to change. A final agenda will be available at least 24 hours prior to the meeting." Mr. Chair and Board, a plan that is so thrown together that it cannot be presented several days in advance shows our tax dollars are not being protected from rushed, on-thought-out plans. This action reinforces further that this board is not showing prudence as they quickly vote yes on rushed Agenda Items without truthfully looking over these high-dollar agendas. Mr. Board and Chair, back to the 1.29 million. Mr. Chair and Board, can you swear before God you read all the updates that happened in the last 24 hours? Or are you too scared to swear again and not keep your oath?
Next item, there's no question in there.
Next speaker, Leslie Shepherd, item number...
You haven't answered my question.
85, Amendment to IGA.
There was no question.
With Arizona Department.
I still got 13 seconds. But you haven't answered my question.
You, you just made a statement. You didn't really ask a question.
Can you swear before God?
Everyone shout.
That you read all the updates in the last half, 24 hours?
Turn off the microphone.
Have you read them?
Lower your voice or I'll have you removed.
Leslie Shepherd, item number 85, Amendment IGA with Arizona Department of Economic Security.
Okay, on this Agenda Item number 85, you also have a, um, that one is for, uh, 193,128. You have Agenda Item number 86 is 300, 3 million. Agenda Item 88, 1 million. Um, Agenda Item 89, uh, 2, uh, 2,750,000. Agenda Item 93 is 10,000, uh, 10 million. And Agenda Item number 94 is 5,775,000. And Agenda Item number 97 is 7 million. So the reason I read all those, these are all dealing with shelters. And so one of the questions that we've asked you is, what is the vetting process that you have to make sure that this money is going toward homing American citizens first? And we've heard that, you know, they look at ID. Now, we know that ID, they give them to people when they come across the border. You guys know this unless you have your head in a hole. And they also give them food cards. So I've asked, many people have asked several times, how... So, I've asked, many people have asked several times, how do you vet an ID that is from somebody who just comes across the border and gets an ID as opposed to somebody who's an American citizen?
Supervisor Gates.
Mr. Chair, our, our staff has answered this question.
They have not answered how they vet the difference between an ID from somebody who gets it across the border as opposed to somebody who's a citizen.
I'm not sure how many times this question can be answered.
As many times until it's actually answered according to how you vet to know it's an American citizen. I've talked to a wonderful gentleman who's actually in the audience. I'm not going to mention his name. He works with the homeless, and he's here regarding one of these agenda items. He said that they actually do not look at ID. They don't care. If you come and you ask for help, you get to go in. Now, I understand the humanitarian side of that, but as far as the United...
Thank you.
Where is it at?
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Roger Maye, wishes to speak on item number 92, followed by Lamar Garza, also speaking on item number 92, amendment to competition and practicable agreement.
Mr. Chairman and the board, the purpose of the agreement is for the contractor to provide centralized, system-wide landlord engagement services for the homeless population in Maricopa County. The county wants to increase the funding by $600,000 from the county general funds for a new agreement, total funding amount of $8,100,000. I have one question. What percentage of the project has been completed?
County manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marcy, can you please come up again? I think Jason is also coming from Human Services.
My name is Jason Matthews, the interim Human Service Director for Maricopa County Human Services, Chairman Sellers, members of the board. For what, this is an opportunity of extending the contract that we already have with Home Inc. through December 31 of 2026. This particular project was already scheduled to, to end, and it was almost at its completion rate. We see great value in working with landlords in Maricopa County.
You're using my time. I asked the question, what percentage of this project has been completed? I need, I need 40 more seconds.
No, you, I'm sorry. No, if you ask a question, part of your time is going to be used in answering that question. That's the way this works.
That question, not the rent.
You're using up your time now.
I don't care. You need to give me more time. What percentage has been done? If you go to a bank and you're, you're building your house, you ask them for more money, the bank's going to say, what percentage has been completed already from our contract that you asked for the building loan? Then we'll think about giving you more money.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, Lamar Garza, also wishes to speak on item 92.
A non-resident.
Louis Marizabeti Garza, number 92. If you'll notice, we can tie in number 84, 85, and 90, where it seems to be a pattern in the money laundering aura that a contract that you did in 2021 has, is now on its fourth financial amendment. The whole thing that I'm noticing is that you keep continuing these projects, you keep giving more money to the individuals, and you don't answer what percentage of this project is done. And money after money goes, and what you do is you extend the term for two more years, you give them extra money for not completing their job, and you revise it with a new budget. And I'm wondering who is responsible for going through the process of holding them accountable? And again, 84, 85, 90, 92, and I'm sure there's quite a few more. I'd like to know the level of incompetency that you're dealing with, with the individuals who make these contracts and immediately turn around and give them an amendment, within months almost. So, if you could answer the question, and I've got 47 seconds left, which percentage of this project has been completed? It's a percentage. I don't need a word salad gibberish Babylon response. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this particular contract was almost fully expensed. And if you might notice that it was going through June 30 of 2025. We had already had plans that the, the contract with Home Inc. was almost fully expended or spent, and the, the opportunity of extending this with another $600,000 was based upon the performance that we measure in all of these contracts. Our staff...
Four amendments in four years. Unacceptable.
Turn off the mic, please.
I just want to finish. We, we measure the, the performance of the contracts, and if we have a poor performing contract, we don't renew these, these amendments.
It's okay.
Thank you.
She's a non-resident. I don't, I don't, it's fine. She's a non-resident of Maricopa County.
Do we have any other speakers?
No other speakers.
I will entertain, the board will now consider items 82 through 94.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. And Supervisor Garado is now online. Under Human Services, item 95, agreement with Arizona Department of Education. Item 96, IGA with City of Phoenix. The board will now consider items 95 and 96.
Excuse me, Chairman. I do have a few speaker forums. These three are on item number 96, the IGA with City of Phoenix. Mr. Nathan Smith wishes to speak in favor. Mr., Mr. Bill Moreland wishes to speak in favor, and Diane wishes to speak in favor. Mr. Nathan Smith, item number 96.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate everything that you do for our county. I've been a proud resident of this county for nearly my entire life. I am the CEO of CAS, Central Arizona Shelter Services. CAS is a pretty well-known agency that provides services to people who are experiencing homelessness all throughout Maricopa County. CAS on any given point in time has the ability to take in over 900 people. We just recently opened a shelter for people who are experiencing homelessness, ages 55 and up. That's clearly a population that is aging across the United States of America, also happens to be aging in the homeless population. We can now get over 130 people into our new units that we just launched last week. We have a 30-unit family shelter where we run a six-month program that is both adult and household and youth-focused with the goal of permanently ending the homelessness for those families, but also providing them the critical services that they need along the way to permanently exiting homelessness. And of course, we're, we're, we are well-known for the 600-bed shelter that we have in the downtown Phoenix area. Historically, it's been a 470-bed shelter. We're up to 600. We have no plans to change that anytime soon, simply because our community needs it. So, in other words, CAS that serves nearly 8,000, between 7,000 and 8,000 households over the course of a year can serve 25% of the people who experience homelessness in Maricopa County over that timeframe. In getting over 900 people off the streets on any given night, we can house nearly 10% of Maricopa County's homeless population on any given night. Not only are we an important safety net for our society, but we want to be the kind of place where we offer opportunities from our shelter for people to never need us again. So, I thank you for your consideration to CAS for additional funding.
And thank you for your service.
Next up, Mr. Bill Moreland wishes to speak in favor.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Bill Moreland. I'm also here representing CAS. I am the board chair for the organization. So, I wanted to thank the supervisors and the county for taking up this action, for considering this, and I strongly encourage you to please pass this. This will help with really, really needed funded that will help us and the city continue to do the important work that we do. I won't repeat everything Nathan said, but one of the things that CAS does that is special about us, we are the largest, lowest-barrier shelter in the state of Arizona. That means we are the place that if you have nowhere else to go, you can show up at our door, and if we have a bed for you, we will give you a bed. There is nowhere else that that happens. So, for a lot of people who are out on the street, we are the first step to getting to someplace better. So, CAS is located on the Key Campus, formerly known as the Human Services Campus. That is a collection of almost 20 service providers doing everything, excuse me, to serve our unsheltered population. That campus would not exist except for the county. So, we appreciate the historical support the county has always shown on this important issue, and we thank you for considering this, urge you to do it again. And I also want to personally thank supervisors and staff. Many of you spent a lot of time with us over the last few months, and were very, very gracious in giving us the opportunity to explain to you what it is that we do, why it is that we do it. You also asked some very, very pointed questions at times and forced us to make sure that we were giving you the information, the answers, and that we were doing things the way that we should be doing them. So, I appreciate the support. I also appreciate the fact that your interactions with us, I think, have made us even better at what we do, and we've been good at it for 40 years, and we're continuing to try to improve. So, just want to thank you, and again, this money will save lives. There are 600 people tonight who will sleep inside of our shelter instead of on the street, and we appreciate all of this support.
Thank you.
Last speaker, Diane, item number 96.
Testing, testing. I'm Diane Barker. I'm in District Five, and I support the help that the City of Phoenix has been doing. I attended MAG, and Mayor Gallegos asked the different mayors if any of them had a shelter for respite during the very hot season. Nobody did except the City of Phoenix. This is 7,500,000 into the temporary sheltering and also supportive of senior citizens into affordable housing. My question to Maricopa County is, is, and you've kind of answered some of it, about the Human Services conducts these contracts, but I'm wondering if they really look at the data that comes back, such as the Respite Center that was at Burton Bar, was very supportive of that. It didn't seem to me they were hiring any extra security for that. I did ask a police officer. He said they did have an incident, I guess, with a stabbing, but I don't know whether it was directly related to that. I am a member of the Roosevelt neighborhood. I was on the board, and I was the only person that would not vote, abstained, for the taking of Circle Case Beer and Wine License. I felt that that was really wrong. I go to that bus stop where some people, quote-unquote, "may be homeless," and I talked to the people. I told them I was adopting that bus stop, and I want to talk to you, Bill, about that that used to be a program there. And they said to me, well, why would you build, adopt one that had so many problems? I said, I don't see people going in and drinking here. And he said, no, it's too expensive.
Any other speakers?
Chairman, no other speakers.
Board will now consider items 95 and 96.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under Human Services Continued, item 97, agreement with Arizona State University. Supervisor Gates will recuse on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number 97.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Under Medical Examiner, item 98, IGA with Valleywise Health. Under Parks and Recreation, item 99, amend agreement with Kiwanis Club of New River. Under Procurement Services, item 100, Broadway Road Bridge at Tempe Canal Phase Two. Item 101, Security Guard Services. Item 102, Chiller and HVAC Mechanical Equipment Maintenance, Repair, Overhaul, and Replacement Services. Item 103, Summer Youth Workforce Program. Item 104, Dog Licensing Services. The board will now consider items 98 through 104.
Still moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under Public Defense Services, item 105, contingency funds for Chase Management System, for Case Management System. Under Public Health, 106, funds from the Department of Health and Human Services. Items 107 through 111, award contracts with Solari, Inc., Arizona Pharmacy Association, Dignity Health, Just Communities Arizona, and Banner Poison and Drug Information Center. Item 112, renewal of grant award. Item 113, MOU with CDC Foundation. The board will now consider items 105 through 113.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under Real Estate, item 114, IGA with City of Glendale. Under Risk Management, item 115, Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit. The board will now consider items 114 and 115.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, such big things going on. So, thank you. The City of Glendale did vote last night for the animal shelter and approved it, and I hope this is a, a start of a great relationship with Maricopa County Shelter System for animals as well as, as the cities. Now, there will be soon a shelter in the West Valley in Glendale, a very large city, and in Mesa on the east side, as well as our central, our central Phoenix location. So, when we talk about shelters and is there not, isn't it, isn't it great what has transpired that we also, that some of the, the animals that have no voice, and we've heard that so many years and so many years, that we are going to be a new, basically a new partnership with, with the City of Glendale?
Very good.
And should stand as a model for, for the rest of the valley.
Thank you. Good news. Okay. Under Transportation, item 116, Change Order with Archer Western Construction LLC. Item 117, Agreement with Flying Bull Internet LLC. Items 118 and 119, IGAs with Arizona Department of Transportation and City of Surprise. Item 120, Road Abandonment Road File Number AB-0378. Item 121, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. The board will now consider items 116 through 121.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under Setting of Hearings, Planning and Development, item 122, Planning and Zoning Setting of Hearings. Under Transportation, items 123 through 126, Patent Easement Abandonment Road Files as listed in the agenda. The board will now consider items 122 through 126.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Consent Agenda, items 127 and 128, Dupliant Stale Dated Warrants. Item 129, Head Start Report. Item 130, Donations. Item 131, Redemption of Waivers for Individuals and Organizational Exemptions. Item 131... Item 132, secured/unsecured tax rule collect corrections. Item 133, Treasurers' Collections and Disbursement Summary. Item 134, tax abatement. Item 135, delinquent property tax interest waiver. The Board will now consider items 127 through 135. Motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Consent Agenda, continued, item 136, Settlement Resolution of Property Tax Cases and Claims. Supervisor Gates will recuse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The Board will now consider item 136.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number 136.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors' Addendum, item 137, Mesquite Power LLC versus Arizona Department of Revenue and Maricopa County, and Supervisor Gates is also recusing on this item. The Board will now consider item 137.
Move to approve item number 137, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors' Addendum, item 138, Quarterly RECO Expenditure Application. Item 139, Initiate Litigation Regarding Zoning Code Violation. Item 140, Agreement with Securing the City's Jurisdictional Partners. Item 141, Appropriation Adjustment for Elections. I believe we're going to take item 142 as a separate item.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, can we take 142 separate?
143, Rescind IGA with Town of Wickenburg. Item 144, IGA with City of Phoenix. Item 145, Amend IGA with Arizona Board of Regents on behalf of the University of Arizona. Item 146, IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services. The Board will now consider items 138 through 141 and 143 through 146.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 142, Chief Deputy County Assessor Appointment.
Chairman, if I may, I do have one speaker form on item 142. This is from Assessor Eddie Cook. He wishes to speak on this item.
Okay. I'm not seeing Eddie.
Think he may have left.
Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if Eddie wanted to speak to our board, but I will ask, I'd ask for 142. I would be seeking a continuance. We did get a chance to talk in executive session a little bit, and I think it's pretty clear I had some concerns, and I think that something like this with, when it comes to chief deputies, there will be a new board of supervisors here, and I do believe he needs to take that option and be able to introduce somebody who he would like as his chief of staff. It's an important position, so I would ask for a continuance on item number 142.
We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would second, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will second the motion by Supervisor Hickman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors' Addendum, item 147, Purchase/Sale Agreement and Escrow Instructions with the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Phoenix. And this item will require a unanimous roll call vote. The Board will now consider item 147.
Move to approve item 147, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Galvin?
Aye.
Supervisor Gates?
Enthusiastic aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Sellers?
Aye. That motion passes.
I was hoping Bill would discuss that a little bit. All I can say is sorry, Andy Canasic, the vision couldn't quite come true for, that he had for that building, so I think it'll be better in other people's hands.
Okay. Board of Supervisors' Addendum, item 148, Settlement in Acton versus Estate of Alister Adele at All. Item 149, Jose Van Pratt at All versus Maricopa County at All Addendum, Amendment, pardon me. The Board will now consider items 148 and 149.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 148 and 149.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, item 50, Adjustment to Fiscal Year 25 Nonrecurring Flood Prone Property Assistance Program and Operating Budget. Items 151 and 152, IGAs with City of Phoenix. Item 153, Agreement with the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency. Item 154, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. The Board will now consider items 150 through 154.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will adjourn as the Flood Control Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. Under Library District, 155, donations. 156, grant and aid from the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records. Item 157, Agreement with Recreation Center of Sun City. Item 158, amend and restate license with JW Tech Consulting LLC. The Board will now consider items 155 through 158.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and I think I'm going to ask for supervisor's comments before we go to public comment, because we might lose Supervisor Gallardo from his phone connection, but...
And I have a meeting too, so I would like to flip the supervisor comments with the call to the public, if you don't mind.
Okay. Supervisor Gallardo, any comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great meeting once again. I apologize for having to leave. I'm heading out here to the City of Tallahassee. But nonetheless, I just, once again, just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership throughout this entire year. You know, we went through another election that was great. I think the Elections Department, once again, did an awesome job in conducting this year's presidential election. But just thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership, and then also, once again, just a big shout out to the three colleagues that are leading yourself, along with Supervisor Gates and Supervisor Hickman. I know we'll cross, our paths will cross once again, but just once again, just a big thank you for your leadership, your courage over the last several years. You have been a friend and a great leader here in Maricopa County, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Hickman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank again all of you guys, and Juanita and Jen, you guys have just been awesome to be up here with, and your staff has done such a great job. You know, Fran was fantastic, and she trained somebody fantastic to come in and run that shop. So Juanita, fabulous job of keeping everything running smooth. I think you have the highest morale with your staff that I think everywhere through my tours of the county that exists, they stick with you, they do such a great job for you. It's a pleasure to get off the elevator bank and see any one of your employees, the protection staff that's always there with a smile through turbulent times or great times. Guys have just been awesome. And Jen, you know, training under Tom, then Joy, then you, and then you watching your department heads come to their jobs daily with a smile on their face, working through people's problems. I think that's a modeling behavior that you do. I've never run into you in a bad mood. We share the penchant for spicy language at times with the passions that we can all exhibit at times, and my colleagues. Bill, you guys, fab, I love you guys. So, that being said, I want to let everyone know I have a meeting, but I am going to walk out of that door with a smile on my face, not letting emotional vampires that come to these meetings and think that they have anything to do with my happiness. My happiness exists here with my family and people that love me, and I could give a damn about any of you. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, again. A great meeting. Thank you, Tom and Steve Gallardo. Appreciate all the kind words from everyone. Would echo everything that Supervisor Hickman said as well. I just do really want to give a shout out to security services and the deputies from the sheriff's office. It's sad that this level of protection is needed these days, but it is extremely grateful. I am extremely grateful for all that you've done to allow us to do the people's work and not have to be concerned about the safety of my colleagues here. And again, it has been the privilege of my life to serve on this board, and this is an incredible county, continues to grow, continues to be one of the fastest-growing counties in the country for good reason, because this is a great place to live, a great place to work and play, and I would say also that there's been a great tradition of a low-tax environment, low-regulation environment that has been key to the success of this county. So thank you all, and I hope you all have a great day.
Thank you, Bill. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, there's quite a few people I want to thank in this year-end review. First of all is you. To be chairman of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors is not an easy task, and the way you went about it this year was done with humility and with integrity and respect, and I think it just shows how, when Chairman Sellers' leadership throughout this entire year was infused with respect for the tens of thousands of employees we have in Maricopa County, the 10,000 employees we have in Maricopa County, and it's hard to individually thank each one of them, but collectively, the five of us thank them. But there are some people that we work with here on a daily basis. It's the clerk of the board, it's the county manager who report directly to the Board of Supervisors, and Juanita, thank you so much for everything that you do and for your office tremendous work. Thank you for everything in 2024. And county manager Jen Pocorsky, thank you for everything. We've worked on so many different issues this year together and tackled so many things. What I feel really good about is we've done a lot of good work. We've done a lot of fantastic stuff, and I'm really proud of the stuff that I've done in my district. You know, it's not the naysayers or the negative people that come in here and like to take potshots. That's really easy. It's really easy to do that. Or the people who spout conspiracy theories, because frankly, the people who are spreading those conspiracy theories to you, they're lying to you. They're grifting off of you. They're taking...
Any more outbursts from the audience, and I will adjourn the meeting.
You can use expletives, you can be mad, but there's only a few of you here. There's 4.5 million people here in this county, and they understand how the county is run and operated. I'm a Republican. I've run twice. I've won. Republicans won big this time, this year. They won big all over the country. In fact, Republicans at the presidential level did better in every single county in the United States of America. Every single county. So this whole thing about military tribunals and election rigging, it's pretty stupid. It really is. So what we do here at Maricopa County Supervisors is we talk about the issues that really matter: economic development, water, transportation, housing, public safety. Nearly half of the budget of Maricopa County is for public safety. You know, the sheriff's office, the prosecutors, the people who go out there every single day actually do real work, the real work of chasing, hunting down, and prosecuting bad guys. It's our job here to make sure that they have the resources that they need. When I talk to people in my district, they don't talk about stupidity like what we hear at public comment. They talk about real-world issues, pocketbook issues. Those are the issues where the Republican Party did really well, because over the last four years, the federal government did a really bad job with the border and did a really bad job with the economy. And the reason why Republicans won this year is because they answered those questions on pocketbook issues, addressing inflation and addressing grocery prices and addressing the issues on the border. And I think over the next four years, we're going to see a lot of substantial improvement in those regards. But here in Maricopa County, we still have a job to do. And what I'm really proud of what we did this year was that we cut the property tax rate for the fourth year in a row. Every single budget I voted on, we've cut the property tax rate. But it's more important is to be fiscally responsible, and we cut the budget overall by 11%. That's unheard of in government. You never hear about that. In fact, most government around the country, they keep growing. And the funny thing about Maricopa County is, is that out of the seven largest counties in the United States, it's the only one led by Republicans. And out of the seven largest counties in the United States, it's the most fiscally responsible, the most successful, and the most fiscally conservative government. I like to compare Maricopa County to Cook County in Illinois, to Harris County in Texas, to Orange County in LA County in California. They're financial basket cases, but Maricopa County's doing really well. It's the reason why companies are coming here. It's the reason why people are moving here. It's because they actually know that Maricopa County, this Board of Supervisors, does a really good job, has really good staff, has fantastic assistant county managers, has an amazing county manager, and has amazing people that work in a wide variety of departments, dozens of departments. So when I think about the totality of what people believe, it's what they put in the voting booth, and it's what they put every single day when they drive the streets, they move here, when they register kids to school, and when they go visit their grandparents. So I'm really proud of the work that Maricopa County has done. In fact, it's done a really good job running three clean elections this year. Yeah? And so if you have a problem with any of the elections that happened, then you're going to be really having a problem with the Republicans who won those elections, and I don't think that's going to happen. So once again, I look forward to us continuing to do a good job in all respects under county services, and once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief. Once again, this has been the greatest honor of my life to serve in this capacity. What an outstanding group we have working here in Maricopa County. I've just been impressed every day I come to work with the quality and the effort that's put in by this county to serve our constituents. I heard all the comments about Juanita, and I agree that she's done a great job, except she did take my admin away from me. She called it a promotion, but it wasn't for me. But at any rate, I'm going to miss being here, but as I said earlier, I'm not going away. I plan to continue to work on the things we've been very successful on, attracting phenomenal economic growth to this area and supporting our infrastructure. So with that, I will open this for public comment.
Chairman, we have 16 public comment forms. I will bring these to you.
First up is John...
Mr. Chairman, if I may just get clarification from Juanita, I think we may have lost a quorum.
Oh, correct.
Supervisor Gallardo? Chairman, we do not have Supervisor Gallardo on the line.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I knew it. I knew it. For shame! For shame!